Yeah, it's good.
This meeting of the city council may be conducted via remote participation. Please note that video and audio of this meeting is being recorded and may be shown live on local access government channels and on the City of Somerville website and will be available for future review. The clerk, please call the roll.
This is roll call, Councilor Bah.
President.
Councilor Wilson.
Present.
Councilor Ewan Campen.
Here.
Councilor Scott. Councilor McGlaughlin.
Here.
Councilor Burnley.
Present.
Councilor Said.
Here.
Councilor Strezzo.
Present.
Councilor Klingon.
Present.
Councilor Davis.
Here.
Councilor Panetta Newfeld.
Here.
With 10 councilors present and one absent, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Pursuant to our Rule 32, let it be known that the city council salutes the flag of the United States of America and let us recall our oath to uphold the Constitution and the laws of the Commonwealth to the best of our abilities and understanding. We will begin this meeting with a moment of silence and I'll ask if any councilors would just say a few words about our members of our community that we have lost. Okay? Will everyone in the chamber who is able, please rise for a moment of silence? You may be seated. Thank you. All right, councilors. We have a few items that we are taking out of order this evening. We'll start with items 4.27 and 4.28. And then we will move to 1010 and 109, which I know we have some speakers here this evening. We will be taking up 76 and 731 and 732 when the mayor arrives, which we expect to be in the next half hour or so. And then also taking 78 and 5184 out of order. With that, Madam Clerk, will you please call the next item?
Item 1.3 is approval of the minutes of the organizational meeting of January 6th, 2025.
Seeing no opposition, the minutes are approved. Next item.
Item 1.4 is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 9th, 2025.
Seeing no opposition, the minutes are approved. Next item.
And that will bring us to the first item we're taking out of order, which is item 4.27 in order by Councilor McGlaughlin, that the Director of Economic Development report on the economic impact to small businesses in Somerville as the result of recent federal immigration policy changes.
Councilor McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Madam President, for taking this out of order and I'd like to sponsor a speaker in a moment. But I just want to talk, we talked about the last meeting, about Donald Trump's immigration policies and how it's affecting people in Somerville, particularly in my neighborhood in East Somerville. Noticeable, visible difference in the community of just an absence of people in stores, in churches, in barber shops. People are afraid to be outside on the streets, law-abiding people who are just trying to survive and take care of their families in this community. And there's a real fear amongst both undocumented and naturalized American immigrants, who are afraid of being mistaken for being undocumented. And we're seeing this play out in the business community as well, especially in East Somerville where the restaurants are not making as much money as they did before. The clientele isn't hiding, you go to Taco Loca around the corner from my house. And there's a noticeable shortage of people there looking to eat. And I do know that, you know, this is an issue that I care about, I think a lot of people here care about. I know some people, it doesn't affect them as much, and some people may even be supportive of the president's policies and, at the very least, may be thinking that legitimate concern about our sanctuary city status and what the president might do to us as a community. But this today, this item is about talking about what his policies are already doing in this community. So even if it doesn't impact you, if you don't think it affects you at all, it's affecting our tax revenue. And that will in turn affect our ability to serve this community. And the city, this country is, the immigrants are an engine of our, they're a part of our economic engine. They've been driving this country since the foundation of this country. And it is a concern to mine. So this is just an item to get information because I know that, I know anecdotally that this is happening and I'd like to show some evidence. So at the very least, people know that this is a serious impact, even if you don't think it's impacting you. It's impacting everyone around you and will eventually impact you as well. So I'd like to sponsor, excuse me, Daniel Boharkas. He's the owner of La Vasa Restaurant in East Somerville to speak. And he can speak because he's talked to many immigrant-owned businesses in the community. I'd like to ask him to come up and speak really quick about what he's experienced and the people in the community. And I'd just add too, I know people at this time are thinking, what can they do to help? I get a lot of messages from people asking, what can we do to help? And I have a very, very small ask. The easiest ask you can ever have is come and eat. Come down and eat at our restaurants, eat in the local businesses, not just in East Somerville, throughout the city. But I will plug East Somerville and say that 75% of the businesses are immigrant-owned and we have some of the best food in the entire city. You can walk down the street and have fine dining where Daniel works, you can get tacos, you can get Chinese food, you can get food from all over the world within walking distance. So I would encourage people to come eat in East, eat in Somerville. And I'd like to sponsor Daniel to speak.
Hi. Yeah, no, I really was, so I guess, yeah, my name is Daniel Boharkas. I'm the owner of La Vasa in Somerville, East Somerville. And I just to kind of, you know, bring something to the table, that's what we have basically every, I'll give you everybody an idea of what we're talking about here. Every month, the East Somerville community has a business meeting where all the business owners come together and we basically, you know, try to figure out ways how to, to, you know, just do our business as usual and also how to improve the neighborhood and how to be part of the community. And this past month, you know, a big part of the conversation was on regards to how, you know, basically the neighborhood's isolated, how it feels. And a lot of it, you know, really comes down to the new, you know, policies, where it comes down to immigration. But really what we're talking about here is business, putting that aside versus the immigration aspect of things. As Matt mentioned, it's, East Somerville has a very big concentration of immigrants in, within the area. So you can, you can really see, you know, the impact that everything is having within, between McGrath and Sullivan Square Station. So really what we're trying to figure out is bring this to everybody's attention, where it comes down to, to, to how it's impacting the community. And also how, you know, basically invite everybody to, to, to basically come and visit the neighborhood, but also find here different creative ways that, you know, the city can, you know, ideas going to be exchanged in order to create a little more of an incentive for people to go to the area. And really, I mean, a lot of conversation, there was had a couple of restaurant owners within the area, within the Broadway, they're talking about potential closures because it's basically haven't seen the business. If you go to Broadway, the whole street is basically feels like a ghost town in there. And yeah, so people, people are scared. So just want to kind of bring everybody's attention and try to figure out how to, you know, to continue to be part of the community as well. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilor Klingon.
Thank you, Madam President, through you, to the speaker. Those monthly meetings are the city's economic development, anybody from the city's economic development team in those meetings? Excuse me. Are there any members of the city's economic development team from the city?
From time to time, yeah. Definitely, you know, we, I part all their, you know, we had other meetings with some other groups within the city of Somerville. But definitely, I think, right now is a time where the city can be, I think, a little more involved within these meetings and again, try to find, you know, just a solution on how to, what's happening and, and try to, again, this, this is going to require a level of creativity because it's not unique to, to, obviously now it's a little more enhanced, but this has been going on for, you know, I've been there for 11 years and East Somerville is always, it's been very isolated for the rest of the community. You know, just I think its location is where we are located, but also the fact there is a lot of, you know, immigrant community there. So I think it's a little bit of a, a lack of, you know, cohesiveness with the rest of the city, I guess. But, but that's kind of try to find ways how to, you know, how to make it more immersive with the rest of the, the city. That's kind of my, you know, I guess, something that we'd like to see.
Thank you for coming up and speaking through you, Madam President. I will, I will be down, you know, as I often am, to have some food in, in East Somerville to support the community. Thank you.
Well, and also the carnival is coming in June, so if you're already just kind of wherever, that's gonna be a good time to, everybody to show up there. And, and also, I obviously appreciate the support, but it's, I think, we would like to have a conversation more, you know, long-lasting. I appreciate everybody's going there and visiting and needing, obviously, to bring your headphones on and we're trying to figure out how to, how to, you know, stay in business and, and welcome everybody there. But also, I think it's also, all our conversations to be had to have a little more long-lasting solutions for, you know, for the area, basically, for the community. Appreciate it. All right. Thank you, guys.
Councilors Davis, Strezzo, Ewan, the whole council would like to sign on to this item. Councilor Strezzo.
Thank you. Madam President, to our speaker as well, by the way.
Daniel? Daniel? So close.
I'll get ready for Valentine's Day.
Okay. Well, when it is assigned to committee, I'd love to, to take it in Housing and Community Development. I would encourage, Madam President, through you, to the administration. Spoiler alert. Hi. Spoiler alert, I'll be asking the administration, the director, if it is assigned to Housing and Community Development, which I hope it is. If it is, I would like, if you would be, Madam President, through you, to the administration, if you can make sure that economic development is ready with their A-game and ready to talk about supporting small businesses. And also, Madam President, through you, to our speaker, La Vasa's awesome, by the way. And also, would you be interested if it is sent to Housing and Community Development, which I'm assuming it would be, if you would come and speak again in my committee on the side of?
Yeah, of course.
Wonderful. That's all.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. Thank you, counselor. Okay. We're going to send this to Housing and Community Development. Yes. Next item.
The next item being taken out of order is item 4.28 in order by Councilor McGlaughlin, that the Chief of Police update this council on the annual reporting of immigration, customs, and enforcement detentions in Somerville as outlined in the welcoming city ordinance.
Councilor McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have a speaker for this item, but it is related to the last item. And a very recent news article came out that is very relative to this, so I'd like to talk about it very quickly. So Somerville is a sanctuary city. It's been that way since I was a child and it's always been a positive thing in this community. We have a welcoming city ordinance that myself and other councilors drafted and passed in the city, which codifies the sanctuary city status, which tells you explicitly what can and can't be done when it comes to immigration issues in the city. And there's a huge misconception, I think, from people on all spectrums, on the whole political spectrum about what this actually means. It does not mean that undocumented immigrants don't get arrested in Somerville. It does not mean that you can commit a felony and get let go and nothing will ever happen to you. It also doesn't mean that we can necessarily always protect people who deserve our protection, unfortunately. So it's very explicit there. One of the parts of the welcoming city ordinance is asking for an annual update about ICE detainers in the city. Because ICE has been here. They've been here this week, they've been here last year, they've been here for years. They, they come and go as they please. They're a completely different body of government, they're a different level of government, they don't need our permission to do their jobs. And they're able to come here, but we can track that and see, you know, what cases, who's been detained and for what cause and things like this. So just the basic information I would like. Something I did want to speak about very quickly is this case that some of you may have read about, where a Turkish national was arrested for a violent crime and was apparently released and committed another crime. And the head of ICE in Boston is basically saying that Somerville let this guy go out and commit crimes. He was not arrested in Somerville. He, he's not a Somerville resident. He went to a court in Somerville that we have no jurisdiction over at all. And I know that may be a strange concept to the president and people who don't understand how court systems work or have no respect for the courts. Our welcoming city ordinance has nothing to do with this guy being released. And to see a federal official make such an inaccurate statement is really concerning and it shows you the direction things are going, where half-truths are going to be put out there about our sanctuary city status in the hopes of harming us. So this is basically to ask for that information. And once again, one of the things that concerns me is maybe not everybody cares about this as much. Maybe people are on the other side of the issue. But regardless of how you feel about immigration in America, this is a constitutional issue to me. We have separation of powers, we have state and federal government for a reason. The president cannot tell our police department to enforce their federal laws. We're not going out having our police enforce RICO cases. And ICE is not here enforcing our traffic laws. So there's clear lines and if we were to do their job for them, that would cost us money as well. And that's why we're not, under no obligation to do the things that they're saying we have to do and threatening us to do this. So it is concerning to me and in this level of government, what I can do is ask for information, highlight the lies and the inaccuracies and show people that this isn't, it's not just black or white. There's people who violate the law, who will get in trouble. There are people who are living their lives being good people and living in this community, who should feel safe to talk to city officials. And that's my intention here. I would like this one referred to Public Health and Safety for discussion.
Councilor Wilson.
Yeah, thanks, Madam President. I want to thank our colleague from Ward 1 for, for putting this in. I'd seen that release, press release put out by ICE that was seized upon by some local media and read through and, and like Councilor McGlaughlin pointed out, was sitting there looking for the City of Somerville angle in this, and there was none. I contacted the police department to confirm that there was no local angle on this and got that confirmation. Just as, my understanding is, from that conversation, ICE is capable of putting together civil detainers, but under state law and then in conjunction then with our, with our welcoming community ordinance. SPD then cannot hold someone on that civil detainer only for a criminal detainer that would be issued, basically, an arrest warrant by a judge. And that was an important distinction. So basically, under state law, the District Court of Somerville wasn't in any position to detain someone, to hold them on that, on that civil detainer. So, you know, I think this is one of those cases where, you know, all too often facts get lost in people, you know, a rush to, to, you know, tell a story and yell about things. I just think it's important that people know the facts here. Thanks.
Councilor Klingon would like to sign on and Councilor Davis would like to sign on. So that will be sent, and Councilor Wilson, that'll be sent to Public Health, Public Safety. Next item.
Next item being taken out of order is item 10.10, a communication by Councilor Burnley conveying the cost of changes to identity documents in support of item 24-1686.
Councilor Burnley.
Thank you. This is a, a communication that brings forward a document produced by the Massachusetts Transgender Political Coalition. It's fortuitous that we started this meeting talking about the damage that the Trump administration's already wrought upon our community. And it is, it is something that's very hard to calculate, frankly, and that hurts many different communities, including our trans siblings and trans youth in this city. And one way that we've seen that play out on the federal and local level recently is through the dismissal and disrespect towards identity markers and documents, from passports to anything that can be taken as an affront to traditional gender roles, being essentially scrubbed from the federal websites and disrespected in the airports. We've seen specifically Massachusetts passports be ripped up and sent by mail to the people who's, who paid for them because they show an X marker instead of a male or female gender marker on them. And I previously submitted an, an order asking our city solicitor to look into our ability to create some kind of fund to help support these members of our community who, through no fault of their own, to be in alignment with their own gender identity, had to pay hundreds of dollars to administrative bodies to have name changes, to have gender marker changes. And the document that is attached here is a list of some of those fees. Everything from $180 for a name change petition, to $50 for a real ID change, to $165 to a passport change. These are costs that ultimately stack up and become hundreds and hundreds of dollars for people who did nothing wrong, just, in some cases, might have a lot of this documentation, but just not in a way that aligns with what the federal government recognizes them as under a extremely hostile, right-wing perspective. And I wanted to sponsor one speaker to talk about this who has some experience with this particular issue. And that is Kelsey Grunstra of, who is a deputy director, I believe, of the Massachusetts Transgender Political Coalition and who should be online currently.
Kelsey, can you, oh, okay. Kelsey, you're, I'm muted.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much. My name is Kelsey Grunstra. As Counselor Burnley said, I am the deputy director at the Massachusetts Transgender Political Coalition. I was a resident of Somerville for many years and I lived there when I legally changed my name nine years ago. I'm very excited to be here to speak in support of this item to establish this fund for supporting trans and non-binary residents of Somerville. So legal name changes are an incredibly important part of many trans and non-binary people's transitions, yet they can be incredibly hard for many of us to access due to the overly complicated bureaucratic processes and the prohibitively expensive fees. Through MTPC's Identity Document Assistance Network and its predecessor, the ID Project, we have assisted thousands of trans and non-binary people with name changes for over 15 years. I myself accessed these resources in 2016 when I changed my name legally. Since July 2024, MTPC has served over 500 individuals in Massachusetts seeking assistance with legal name changes, the vast majority of which came after the, the results of the 2024 presidential election were announced. One of our most requested name change services is for financial assistance because the fees and the other associated costs, as you have seen in the document that Counselor Burnley presented, can often exceed $300 to $400. While the Commonwealth does provide a court waiver fee for those who are able to establish indigency in the eyes of the state, the requirements for indigency are incredibly strict and they exclude a large number of people who don't meet those requirements, who are still struggling to pay for rent, grocery bills, and utilities. And even with this waiver, there are still the other fees for updating ID documents such as state IDs, passports, and birth certificates that are not covered by that waiver. So the cost of this process is particularly impactful for trans and non-binary folks. As we face disproportionate rates of poverty, underemployment, and unemployment. This was shown in the 2022 U.S. Trans survey, which found over one-third of trans people in the U.S. live in poverty and 18% were unemployed at the time of the survey, which is more than five times the national unemployment rate at that same time. So Somerville has been, long been a leader in supporting the rights and equality of its transgender and non-binary residents and is certainly one of the places that many people in Massachusetts and from other states seek out as a safe haven. Given the city's commitment to protect its trans and non-binary residents, I urge the council to take this timely and impactful opportunity to advance the lived equity of your trans and non-binary constituents by passing item 268616 and helping us forward, and helping us work towards ending this tax on trans identity. Thank you so much for your consideration of this important item and thank you again to Counselor Burnley for inviting me.
Any questions, colleagues? Okay. Councilor Burnley.
Can we approve this and send a, a copy of it to Legislative Matters since I believe that the item referenced in the communication is in Legislative Matters currently, in order for the city solicitor specifically?
We'll place this on file with a copy to Legislative Matters. Okay? Next item.
The next item then will be item 10.9, a resolution by Counselor Burnley in support of a contract for Tufts University's full-time lecturers.
Councilor Burnley.
Thank you. More fortuitousnesses in this moment, given that we have a number of union members here present. I had a conversation earlier today with Representative from Tufts University and we spoke about the ongoing negotiations with the full-time lecturers. These are folks who create classes, who teach classes, who are both formal and informal advisors to, at sometimes hundreds of students at a time, who have course loads that are far beyond wieldy and cause them to be overworked and underpaid. And who thankfully have had a contract before, have been able to negotiate two contracts in the past, but are now, I believe actually, out of contract as of recently. And who have had opportunities presented to them and had them rescinded as well when it, the, when Tufts University deemed it convenient to kind of bait and switch around caseloads versus pay. We're here to say that teachers' working environments are students' learning environments. People deserve both fair pay and a decent workload that is not so cumbersome that they can't afford to get home on time, be with their families, spend time with friends. And I'd want to sponsor two speakers to speak very briefly, from their director experience around this. And that would be, Tim, where did I write these names down?
Cockman.
Tim Simpson.
Oh.
And.
Where's Tim Simpson? There we go.
And then I'll let the other person introduce themselves right now.
Tim, welcome.
All right. First of all, thank you for having us and for taking an interest in our situation at Tufts. I'm sure there are plenty of pressing issues for you here in Somerville and the fact that you take the time to listen is actually much appreciated. Tufts has been a part of the Somerville community for about 175 years, so when things are good at Tufts, they're better for Somerville. Right. My name is actually Ted Simpson. That's okay. I've been a lecturer at Tufts for 22 years. I teach set design for theater, dance, performing arts, and consequently designed a lot of the sets for the department's shows over there. In my time at Tufts, I have come to learn that the lecturers at Tufts are extraordinarily dedicated groups of folks. They're dedicated to their students especially, so it was a really tough decision for many of us to decide to walk out of our classroom if you of us to decide to walk out of our classroom a few weeks ago. It was counter to our best instincts as teachers. It was not a decision we took lightly, especially when it comes to our students. But the truth is, we would be better teachers if we were not overworked and underpaid. All we are asking is for Tufts to treat us fairly, but unfortunately, we reached a point in our negotiations where we truly had no choice but to walk out. We came to the bargaining table with Tufts having absorbed a 22% inflation rate over the life of our previous contract, and you are correct, we are not, we don't have a contract right now. Our current contract expired in the end of August, so we haven't had a contract since September 1st. So all we've been asking is for Tufts to make sure that we can keep up with the cost of living. Instead, Tufts has come to the table with disingenuous stories about financial hardships, claiming that the institution is in a financial hardship and cannot afford to pay the employees that it has. I say disingenuous because while they were telling us about shortfalls and hardships, they were reporting $34 million surpluses to their trustees, creating $6 million mortgage assistance plans for their tenure stream faculty, and creating high-paying upper administrative positions within the university. So during the first 10 months of negotiations, despite our clearly demonstrated need, all that Tufts offered us was $250. $250, not per week, not per month, but per year. In other words, $6.50 a paycheck. Over 10 months, that's all that they offered us, and it's been clear that they want to drag out this process and make it painful for their dedicated employees. Tufts uses a merit-based pay system, so that, and that system has only seen us fall further and further behind. Examples of this can be seen in lecturers taking part-time employment outside of the school to help make ends meet. I've watched my own savings account personally dwindle over the last few years as I'm getting closer to retirement age. That's exactly the opposite of what you want your savings account to do. I have a colleague who just took out a $30,000 debt consolidation loan because their credit card debts have mounted up, you know, not because of great expenses or because of reckless spending, but because they simply can no longer keep up with the exact same expenses they had five years ago. I have another colleague who's been renting a place from Tufts for the last 13 years, but he and his wife and daughter cannot save money to buy a place and cannot afford even a second car, so the two adults make do sharing one 12-year-old car between them. So a lot of lecturers live at least an hour from campus because they can't afford to live anywhere close enough to Somerville. So Tufts gives pay raises on a merit-based system. It's a system that they are very proud of, but they don't want to talk about COLA raises or cost of living raises, and the reason for that is that when you compare Tufts to its peer institutions, and these are schools of Tufts' own choosing, so I'm not cherry-picking institutions here, but schools of Tufts' own choosing, when you compare Tufts' pay to that and factor in cost of living, Tufts pays second to last. This is a school with a $2.4 billion endowment and 175 years of history, and they pay their faculty second to last. All we are asking to do is to move at least somewhere towards the middle of the pack. Instead, Tufts operates on a merit-based pay system that gives us raises not based on the cost of living, but based on performance. In other words, you need to perform above and beyond to simply keep up with the cost of living. And this approach has done nothing but promote a work-based culture at Tufts that sees its faculty straining to keep up with bills and straining to give up with work in pursuit of a merit-based pay raise. And to speak more about this culture of work, my colleague Brenna Heitzman has a few things to say.
Welcome.
Hi, everybody. Thank you. My name's Brenna Heitzman. I'm a senior lecturer, which means I've been at Tufts for about 11 years, and I'm in the Romance Studies Department, which means I teach French, language, and literature, and it means that my department services a massive language requirement at Tufts, which means we see a majority of undergraduates come through our doors. We know that when we talk about full-time lecturers, we're talking about essentially teachers. We love what we do. We do this because we love it. We are professionals, we are experts, and we are specialists in our fields. However, Tufts currently right now is playing with our commitment to teaching, to our students, and trying to exploit work from us, and that's the reality of our situation. We have been negotiating for over 11 months now for a fair contract, and within this negotiation, we've had two major sources of concern: manageable workload and salary. And those things are not separate. When we talk about someone not able to afford a house within an hour commute to Tufts, we're talking about time with family, we're talking about time grading papers, we're talking about time teaching that takes away from students. We're talking about me grading until midnight, and I have the luxury of being one of the few lecturers who lives in Medford. Yes, I am your neighbor. I only live in Medford because I am a resident of Walnut Hill Properties, which is a Tufts' own property, and I have a small clause that allows me to live there. If I was not able to, I wouldn't be able to afford anything near this area. So when we talk about teaching, we are teachers who love to be there, but there's a limit to our time and energy. There just is. And when we talk about workload, Tufts came to the table, and the only thing that they offered us in the past 10 months of negotiation was a reduction in courses taught. Courses take an enormous amount of time and expertise to create, they take energy, they take communication with students. The vast amount of emails you receive from a class is overwhelming, so a reduction in five courses to five courses from six was significant. However, as of January, Tufts came to us and said, if you are interested in negotiating salary, the only way that's feasible is if we return to a six workload. That's very disingenuous when we talk about managing both of these in an actual livable situation for our lecturers. We need livable wages, and we cannot have neither, which is sufficient. Our student population keeps growing. I'm sure you see these effects within your community. We have more students being admitted to Tufts every single year, and we are asked to maintain the same workload and just assume all of these students into our current work without any give or take from administration on the amount of this work. I don't just teach, I also do committee work, I do service, and I also do advising, like you mentioned earlier. This is major advising, this is undergraduate advising. We are servicing a massive percentage of the Tufts community's students. We are student-facing individuals who are not being respected at the table. The message that we're receiving at bargaining is that a work-life balance doesn't extend to Tufts' full-time lecturers, and that's why we had our walkout, and that's why we tried to show administration that while we love teaching, there are limits to what we can sustain and what we have to sustain. So after 11 months of bargaining and limited workload, we're here, and we're thanking you for your time to listen to what we've been going through and hopefully find a resolution within the next few weeks to months. Thank you.
Counselor Ian Kipman.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you, I just want to thank both of you for being here. It is infuriating, and, you know, myself and several of my colleagues were on campus for the walkout. The energy was incredible, incredibly motivating and inspiring, and just please know, we have your back 1,000%. The community has your back 1,000%. I cannot imagine how difficult this is, what you all are going through, and just please know that we're all behind you and we'll be there whenever you need us.
Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, thanks, Madam President. As upset as we are to hear about this, I would like to think the people who should be really upset about this are the people who are paying $70,000 a year in just tuition, just tuition, to send their kids. Going by, sorry, going by the latest thing, but yeah, total cost is far in excess, but the tuition is astronomical at this school. If I were a parent paying that much money and hearing that my kid's education is being placed, the quality that's being placed at risk because the school is doing this, I would, I would be absolutely incandescent. So ethically and just from a practical standpoint of what they're doing by not recognizing the value of their teachers. So, yeah, I stand with you, and I'm outraged, and I would like to think that the Tufts community should be outraged as well.
We have Counselors Mbah, McLaughlin, and Klingon, and then Zayid next.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to sign on, and I want to thank Counselor Burnley for your leadership on this. I appreciate that. Thank you for also your boldness and the courage you take. You know, I wasn't there, but I stand with you. I just wanted to say that I also go on record to call Tufts University to prioritize investing in, you know, the teachers because both livable wages and sustainable workloads are essential to workers and to the university more broadly. So I just want to go on record that we are behind you, and thank you.
And Counselors Ian Kipman and Strozzel want to sign on as well, just to note that. Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll sign on as well. It's going to be one of those nights where I talk a lot, so apologies. But as a Tufts alum who did not pay $70,000 a year, I am also upset about this because when I went to Tufts, it wasn't the administrators who made it such a valuable time to me, it was the professors. And I've also been a Tufts student who has had promises walked back from Tufts University, so I know exactly how you feel about this right now. But I grew up in the city, looking up at the school on the hill, and, you know, I've been talking to someone from Somerville, and he might be asking, why professors? Why are we sticking up for professors? Well, we're here for the janitors, we're here for this or that. The professors, they're the ones with money, right? And at the end of the day, this is about the exploitation of labor, which is what it always comes down to. Tufts is a billion-dollar institution, and they're trying to squeeze every employee, from the professor to the custodian, to get as much money out as possible, and they're treating it like they're a for-profit organization when they are a nonprofit organization. They're doing this by, just like other colleges, getting rid of tenure, increasing adjunct professors, and they don't, they don't pay any, they're not paying enough for Somerville, that's for sure, for us to ignore this. And on top of that, they, when we call them on this, the pilot agreement is what I'm referring to, the fact that they don't really contribute much to the city of Somerville, their answer is always that we give our students, they volunteer at your organization. So they're bleeding the professors and then taking credit for the free labor of students and saying that they're the reason that they don't have to pay taxes. So it's very disappointing to have such a powerful institution just treat the city and treat their employees like this, and if the city can do anything to get tough on Tufts, I think we should be doing that.
I'm Clark. I think the whole council wants to sign on to this, just to note that. Counselor Klingon, then Counselor Zayid.
Thank you, Madam President. I think Counselor Ian Kipman put it the best, you know. I, we support you, I support you, I stand with you. Of course, I'm always here for labor and, you know, I don't really have anything good to say about Tufts, not that anybody here does, but I mean, I really have some really bad things to say about Tufts, just with the way that they've, they used to be somewhat of a respectable organization, like 30 years ago, or maybe more, when, you know, you could be a janitor and your children could still go. They did away with just about everything and pared it down to the fact that now they're what's considered a mini Ivy, and they're getting almost $85,000 a year. And they claim to do really good things for Somerville, like as far as the number of kids that they allow to go there, but as far as any type of financial support, it really lacks, and they're just not a good community member, they're not a good neighbor, and so I don't really have much faith in this institution at this point, but I do, I do think that if you all stick, you know, one day longer, one day stronger, stick together, and hopefully you can have a resolution to this. You know, if not, they don't deserve you, but happy to walk the picket line anytime. I just need a little heads up, because I work in the daytime. So that last one kind of slipped in, but absolutely have your back. Thank you.
Counselor Zayid.
Thank you through you, Madam President. First, I would like to thank Counselor Burnley for putting this forward, for sponsoring speakers. Thank you so much for sharing with us what you have been going through as a former French teacher, who was the only French teacher in the district of Somerville for years. I absolutely hear you, like the workload and the salary. And thank you for showing up every day and doing your job every day. I've heard great things about your department. So I am absolutely outraged, infuriated, this is infuriating and is shameful to not be bargaining in good faith and to just not listen to your employees when you're just asking for the bare minimum, like I need to be able to just pay my rent and buy a car to get to work. So I stand with you, I support you. Let us know what we can do. Yeah. Thank you.
This item is approved. Thank you. Next item.
The next item will be item 7.6, a request of the mayor requesting the appropriation of $1,472,992 from the Salary Contingency Account to various departmental personal services accounts to fund a collective bargaining settlement with the Somerville Municipal Employees Union, Unit B, taken up in conjunction with item 7.31, a communication of the mayor conveying a forthcoming appropriation request from the Salary Contingency Account to various city departments to fund the costs of the memorandum of agreement with the Somerville Municipal Employees Union, Unit B.
Colleagues, exciting moment. Madam Mayor, please.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's great to be here with you and certainly welcome, SMEU. I have to say that slowly because I always want to, you know, change that to the, to the A. So I think we've all been looking forward to this evening. We're here tonight to submit an appropriation request to the council to fund a new union contract. This is not your usual contract. We recently ratified a new contract for SMEU Unit B, our largest employee bargaining unit, and it's a game changer. For the first time since SMEU organized here in Somerville nearly 60 years ago, my administration ordered the union's first-ever wage compensation study. That study allowed us to account not just for inflation and the market rate paid to certain professions, but to evaluate the wage discrepancies due to bias and to correct them. And that work informed and creates the basis of significant salary increases seen in the contract before you. I've said many times that on my watch, Somerville will not stand for unequal pay for equal work, and I mean it. I've said all our workers are valued, that they all must be fairly compensated, and I meant it. So we rolled up our sleeves, we did a lot of research to be sure we got it right, and then we got to work with our union leadership to create a contract that went well beyond the usual incremental improvements beyond adjusting for increases to cost of living. We provided the targeted wage adjustments, position by position, to recalibrate how Union B members are compensated and to ensure they are compensated equitably based upon the work they are in fact performing. This three-year contract covering 2023 through 2025 is more than the culmination of months of hard work and discussion between the city and the union leadership. It cements a new commitment towards greater fairness for all of our workers. We work together with SMEU leadership not just to take on inflation, but to also achieve long overdue equity. And I cannot thank our union leadership enough for working with us to get us there. I hope your members know you have their back, because you do, and I want your members to know that my administration does too. Together, we took on not just wages and benefits, but also longstanding bias. When I say bias, I mean gender bias, class bias, educational bias, and industry bias, bias that can affect workers of every gender, age, and background, bias that isn't found only in Somerville, bias that is pervasive in our society. We got there by taking a deep dive on compensation, analyzing over 90 different positions in Unit B and comparing our pay to over a dozen neighboring communities. Putting in that work paved the way to a contract that not only addresses cost of living increases, more importantly, tackles longstanding wage inequities. The result, SMEA Union President Ed Halloran, who's worked for the city for more than 32 years, said, and I quote— years, said, and I quote, "This may be the best contract the members of this union have ever received, and it's a tribute to the members of the bargaining committee, union officers, and members who have worked on the job in person through COVID, as well as an administration and union that together bargained in good faith." Thank you, Ed. I'll take that and write back at you. No, you can say it again. Specifically, this agreement includes significant salary adjustments. In the first two years, everyone in Unit B received a 6% raise. And in the third year, the FY '25, we're implementing market adjustments that will increase the starting salaries of new Unit B members on an average by 17%, and increasing existing member salaries on an average by 14%. Beyond wages, we also boosted benefits. That includes adding paid family and medical leave benefits, increasing vacation time, and improving reimbursement paid to employees who use their personal vehicles for city business. We also reached agreements that will allow the city to continue to modernize our payroll system for greater efficiency. But this isn't just about the numbers, it's about fairness. It's about ensuring that everyone who contributes to our city is compensated fairly for their hard work regardless of their department job title. It's about addressing biases that have historically led to pay discrepancies. The adjustments we hammered out together are based on comprehensive wage compensation studies that our administration conducted. We did that to ensure comparable pay for comparable work across all city departments. This means we're not just giving raises, we're fixing a system that needed fixing. This contract impacts employees across approximately 25 city departments, from public works and water and sewer to our libraries, the city clerk's office, parking, and inspectional services. These are people who help keep our city running, and they deserve to be recognized and compensated for their dedication. This contract is a major step towards that goal. It's about more than just a paycheck, it's about valuing the contribution of every member of our city workforce. What we do right by our workers, when we do right by our workers, we attract and retain the best talent, and that benefits all of Somerville. This is a win-win for our employees and for our community. This type of work always takes many hands, but I want to specifically thank Unit B members and the union bargaining team, which includes representatives from each department in that unit that dedicated countless hours to attending bargaining sessions, bargaining prep, reviewing and drafting proposals. I want to thank and recognize union leadership for their vision, their commitment to our workers and our community, and their constant good faith. That's President Ed Halloran, Vice President Ed Hardy, Secretary Stephanie Estrella, and Treasurer Julianne Debona. And finally, we often, they often get overlooked, but I also want to thank city staff, our law office, especially Matt Sirigu, human resources, Ann Gill, Ellen Schneider Collins, my office, Lamas Vargas, and more, who also spent countless hours supporting the wage research, working on drafts, negotiating, and working through so many details and steps to help get us to this groundbreaking final contract. I'd like to take a moment to ask any SMEU worker, as well as any union leadership and staff who had a hand in this progress, to stand, and let's applaud them for their important To be clear, my goal is this. As the city goes to work for the community every day under these agreements, I want to be sure we're always building a city where everyone's worker's contribution is recognized and compensated fairly and equitably. That's how we hold to values and how we build a better community. And when I say every worker, I mean every union and non-union alike. Whether we draw up plans to re-stripe a crosswalk for public safety, or process the bill for the paint, or you're on the crew that lays down those potentially life-saving reflective white stripes, your work matters to our community. All workers are valued by our community, and under my watch, I will work to be sure you are fairly compensated for serving our community. I know this council cares deeply about our workers and about fairness and equity too, and I thank you for that. It is my hope and belief that this will not just be an administrative action for you to consider the needed appropriation, but an act of solidarity for the work we all do together to fairly compensate and value our workforce. But we are not done. The contract for SMEA Units A and D are still being negotiated, and we're ready to get to work on those contracts as soon as this one is finalized. Likewise, our non-union workers also addressed by their wage compensation study and the other unions next in line in upcoming contracts, and all need your attention and support. In Somerville, and for me, equity is not a buzzword. It is the foundation of everything we do. This contract strengthens that foundation in a time when equity is under threat. So this is Somerville holding to what is right and what is fair. I'm honored and proud to be part of this process that once again has Somerville leading the way. I thank you for your consideration, and I ask you to continue to support our workers and community today and into the future by approving the appropriation put before you tonight. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Do we need a roll call on that? All right. That item is approved. Congratulations. I'd like to sponsor.
I don't need much, I don't need much time.
Come to the mic, please.
I've got most of my time. My script. Thank you so much.
Ed Halloran.
Thank you, Matt.
Welcome.
I also want to thank the city council.
Introduce yourself.
Oh, yeah, of course. Thank you, Will. My name is Ed Halloran, and I'm the president of the Somerville Municipal Employees Union. Worked for the city for 32 years in the highway department, and I love what I do, obviously, otherwise 17 years is an insane amount of time to be doing this kind of work. It's crazy stuff, right? And I think this, I'd like to see you guys smiling because it's really important considering what's going on in the country right now, and hearing what's happened over Tufts University. You just can't stand for things like that. It can't happen. But I will wish everybody Happy Valentine's Day. Right? Nothing wrong with that. But I do want to thank you very much. You know, the mayor echoed a lot of the things that we felt, the vote was big, had a lot of people there. There were some no's, of course, there's going to be no's in every contract, but we really excited about it. All the things that the mayor mentioned, and the benefits and the money, this has kind of like brought us up to speed where we are. We're looking at retention, getting jobs, getting people into jobs, and we're seeing that happen right now. I mean, I think people just coming in the door, we got a gardener, we got some new people coming in over the DPW. So it's really exciting for us to get new people and new members and not rely so much on the contractors, you know? I mean, we don't, we need contractors, but you don't need that many. And the DPW would have been here, they would have been well represented, but Ed Hardy's here. These cranky little two inches, three inches, things like that have put them asleep. So they're getting a well-deserved nap tonight, and I appreciate them, I really do. So all of those, we represent about 250 members, and we are organizing new members as we speak because that's our job and that's what unions do, we organize. So if someone's, someone needs representation, we give it to them. If I go to see my doctor, or doctors, because I have like 12 or 14, I have a team of doctors at my age, they want to be in a union. They do, they want representation, they need it. So I do appreciate everything that the mayor said. I have to thank the bargaining team because they really did an outstanding job. It's an incredibly difficult thing to sit there and go back and forth. One thing the mayor, that the mayor did mention was talking about doing this, this wage study. And I knew that once that came out, this was going to be an issue for us because we needed to have our own numbers. And our attorney, Jack Hansaneri, who's probably one of the most patient people I think I've ever met for an attorney, we got the numbers, and we spent a good amount of money to get those numbers from other cities and towns. And we want to be, we want to be in the top, we deserve that. We really do. I mean, I think we're a great workforce. We always support the residents, no matter what's happening, no matter what's going on. Want to make sure they get what they need. So if you give us the things that we need and we get your support, we'll take care of it. And training people is incredibly important to make sure they have what they need, feeling good when they come to work, feeling comfortable when they come to work, giving them support that they need. Of course, we're going to have disagreements with the city because that's what happens with unions. We go back and forth, we bargain, we negotiate in good faith, and we get what we need. So I would say all the good stuff that the mayor said, but man, she's covered just about everything that I got, you know? But I do want to thank you very much, and thank you for passing this. You guys have to smile more often. You know, it's not, it's a good night for us, so I want to thank you so much for that. Thank you.
Counselor Wilson.
Madam President, I will move for reconsideration in hopes that it fails so we can get these folks paid.
All right.
On the motion to reconsider, Counselor Ba.
No.
Counselor Wilson.
No.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
No.
Counselor Scott.
Counselor McLaughlin.
No.
Counselor Burnley.
Nay.
Counselor Said.
No.
Counselor Strezzo.
No.
Counselor Klingon.
No.
Counselor Davis.
No.
Counselor Panetta Newfeld.
No.
With 10 counselors opposed and one absent, reconsideration has failed, and that item stands approved.
Colleagues, let's take a five-minute recess for some photos, and we'll come back in five minutes. Thanks. Colleagues, welcome back. I'd like to call this meeting back to order, please. Madam Clerk, let's place 7.31 on file, and let's read the next item, please.
And the next item will be item 7.32, a communication of the mayor conveying an update on a potential shift in the art studio ecosystem in Somerville.
Madam Mayor.
Wonderful. Thank you. I would like to give the city council an update on our art studio ecosystem. Our city values community ownership of creative and cultural space. Owning property is a crucial way to ensure long-term affordability and prevent displacement. While the pathway to ownership can be challenging, it can be a fantastic outcome for artist studios and creative businesses. As we know, high property values put it out of reach for most artistic businesses and organizations. And the city is in a unique place to support the community ownership of space in Somerville with some technical aids and policy changes. The shift in ownership could provide creatives and artists with long-term home in Somerville. So I want to give a brief update on a project that may come before the city council. The owners of 57 Central Street have recently put their building on the market for sale. This is a building that houses art studios, and it's across from the Somerville Museum. I have personally spoken with the current owner last week, and we are working in partnership with them and a potential buyer, the Arts and Business Council of Greater Boston, to find a path forward for the building to remain studio building into the future. The current owner wants to see their legacy as a benefactor of the arts continue on at 57 Central. But they also have concluded that it's time for a new steward of the building. There is currently a funding gap to make the sale possible, and the city can play a role in closing this gap. And I'm confident that we can close this gap. City staff are working as we determine which tools we can use to support the transition so that we can collectively preserve this building. The Arts and Business Council of Greater Boston is also doing their part to find philanthropic dollars, grants, and other funds. My goal in coming to you all with this update now is threefold. One, to assure you that we're working to facilitate the sale that will sustain these artist workspaces. Two, to let you know early that we may be looking to city funding sources to support this project as part of an ongoing effort around anti-displacement. And number three, to share that this is truly a partnership effort. And I want to amplify that the opportunity to any and all who may wish to connect with Arts and the Business Council of Greater Boston. And I, I am finished, Madam President, and I would just ask if anyone has any questions, happy to chime in.
Counselor Dean Kippen.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I don't have any questions. I am extremely thrilled about this, and I want to talk about it because I've had to hold my tongue for a long time as I've been waiting for this. So I remember probably three years ago, right after Mayor Valentine was elected, we had our first meeting. And I brought my list of like my top whatever, five, eight priorities for Ward Three. And right near the top of that list was save 57 Central. This has been, I think all of us know, this is the story across Somerville, is we have these incredible resources, whether they're kind of affordable housing, whether they're artist spaces, whether they're locally owned businesses, and they're at incredible risk of displacement. And we've made a lot of progress in housing with the city stepping up to support, whether it's the Community Land Trust coming in and buying property, whether it's Somerville Community Corporation or other nonprofit partners, but especially art space, we just haven't quite figured out a way yet. And this is the way. So for folks who are kind of following this, this is a building, it's going up for sale. And with the city's support and with the organizing of the people in the building and the Art Stays Here Coalition, they've found a nonprofit potential buyer. And with the city's support, we can make that happen, and it can continue to be an artist's building forever. So I am incredibly excited that we are close to making this happen. And I just want to thank all the city staff and Mayor Valentine who, who have done this. And I also really cannot give enough credit to the building owners, the Morse's. Not only have they kept this artist building in, in Ward Three for, for years and years and years, but when it came time to sell this building, they have really just gone above and beyond to work with the city to make sure that this doesn't become just another building that the vultures circle and they evict everybody and, you know, flip a quick profit, that this actually stays an artist's building. And what I'm most excited about, and I don't, you know, we're not at the finish line, so let's be clear. But if we are able to pull this off, this is the kind of thing that sets a precedent. And that going forward, when we find ourselves in this situation again, we can point to this and say, hey, this is possible. We can make this happen. And so that's the kind of thing that, you know, the patience and the collaboration of the Morse family, and then the organizing of the people in the building and the Art Stays Here Coalition, this is just unbelievably kind of motivating and inspired community organizing. So unless there are other questions, I'd really like to sponsor some of the members of the building who I know are here tonight. I think there's a, a gang of them, and I'd like to sponsor them all. They promise to be brief. Please.
Come on up.
Hi. I think just a couple of us are going to come up to-
Will you introduce yourself as well?
Yes. My name is Jack Grooman. I grew up in Somerville over at 242 Summer Street. My parents still live there. My brother lives there. And I have a studio space at 57 Central Street, and I've been there about two and a half years. I want to give some thank yous to the mayor and the city, and the Boston Arts Council, no, Boston- Arts and Business Council, and city staff for all coming together to work on how we can facilitate this sale to preserve this building. Huge thank you to Art Stays Here for their supportive help to all the tenants, and kind of coordinating all these efforts. And a really big thank you to the current owners of the building, Paul and Karen Morse, and David Benson, and Nancy Dutton, for keeping this space artists, like an affordable, a very affordable artist studio space for a long time. They have been very dedicated in keeping this place what it is. They are the best landlords I have ever had. And in this whole organizing process, I'm really grateful to them for making it like a collaborative, positive experience. Just a few words about why this is important and setting this precedent is important. You know, having grown up here, I have seen a lot of things disappear in this city, in the surrounding area, in the Boston area, first kind of more slowly, and then after the pandemic, you know, we've, we've seen a lot of kind of cultural spaces clear out. And these essentially third spaces, right? It's not your house, it's not a business, it's not an institution. It's a workspace, are, are crucial for that kind of cultural production that happens in these collaborative spaces where it's not about making money, and it's not about where you sleep and where you eat. MySpace has allowed me to have materials for my practice. I'm a video installation artist. I have TVs, I have projectors, I have, you know, I make constructions of sets. It's allowed me to have this practice, and it has allowed me to also bring other artists in who maybe don't have art spaces to be able to collaborate and make plans for things that we would like to bring to the public. Having these spaces affordable allows me to be generous, which is very important to me. I can be generous with my time, and I can be generous with these resources that I have. And Art Stays Here has been generous to us. They're not getting paid. This is all like a labor of love. And then another note, you know, just as to what was talked about earlier, you know, we were talking about Tufts, we were talking about other displacements. I went to the Museum of Fine Arts School, which is now part of Tufts. There's other people in the building who also went to that school or went to Mass Art. And upon graduating, everybody left. Everybody came here, they went to school here because Boston is the city of universities, and then it's not a place you can stay. And part of that, yes, affordability, cost of living, but for the arts specifically, it's the availability of space. Space is essential for the production of art. If Somerville wants to keep, you know, posting the highest per capita, you know, artists outside of New York City, which, you know, is a great statistic, then they have to maintain these affordable artist spaces. Because what brought in the older generation of artists was the space and affordability of Somerville. It's brought, you know, a lot of people who are displaced from Boston and from Cambridge have come to Somerville because there was still space here. If we want the new, younger generation of artists to come here and stay here, we need to keep these spaces. And there are fewer and fewer of them. And every time one is sold and it changes purpose and disappears and is developed into something more profitable, it is gone. Because these spaces are like, you know, it's like a tree, right? Cut a tree down, it's going to be a long time before it comes back. So with that said, extra thank you to everybody. I hope this sets a precedent for things in the future. I am really looking forward to working something out where we can preserve this. And it's been beautiful to work with everybody involved. Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi. My name's Lena Varnka. I've lived in Somerville for about eight years. I'm also a tenant at Central Street Studios. I'm an artist and a musician, and I'm part of the band Sidebody. And yeah, I'm really grateful to the mayor and the city for trying to preserve our affordable artist workspace. This building has quite literally saved my band. We were looking for practice space for years. We were practicing in different basements every week. It was absolutely not sustainable. And yeah, this year, we're representing Somerville at Boston Calling, which is a major music festival. And we would not be able to do that without this affordable space that we have. So yeah, you know, we are very grateful that the building owners and the Arts and Business Council and the city staff are all working together to find solutions to keep our building as affordable artist space. Artist displacement, as we all know, is rampant in this city and in the greater Boston area. And this city really needs artists. So we hope that this can set a precedent for all artists in Somerville going forward. Thank you.
Welcome.
My name's Andrea Balu, and I also have a studio at 57 Central. I'm a poet. I also make things as part of my practice. But I just have to say that writing is such a solitary act. And this is the first time that I've been able to afford a studio. And it's a game changer. To be able to be in a community with writers and musicians and have conversations and just be part of a, a group has been extremely important for my practice. And, and I just want to say I'm proud to be a resident of Somerville where a mayor would support such a path-breaking project. And that's, thank you.
Hi, I'm Joe Bergio. I'm a practicing artist. I don't have a studio in the space, but I am a member of the Somerville Artist Council Board. I was lucky enough to visit the studio during Open Studios recently and in previous years. I was struck by the good work that was going on there across multiple disciplines. I was also very pleased to see the level of community engagement with people coming in. There was a lot of interplay between folks in the community and the, the artists, the very good energy. So I just wanted to add that comment to, and my observations to what's, what's happening here. And thank you for hearing me.
Okay, that item is placed on file. Next item.
The next item is going to be item 7.8, a request of the mayor requesting approval of an intermunicipal agreement between the city of Somerville, the city of Cambridge, Cambridge Health Alliance, and the Metropolitan Area Planning Council for the establishment and operation of the Somerville-Cambridge Public Health Collaborative.
Great. We have Finance Manager Malik here. Or, yes, or on Zoom? Yes. Hi, come on up. As well as Shared Services Coordinator Satterfield. Is she here as well? Online. Okay, great. Malik.
True Chair to the council members, this item is on the table for approval because we are-
Can you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, sorry. Anoop Malik of HHS Health and Human Services Finance Manager under Karen Carroll. So this intermunicipal, true chair, this intermunicipal agreement- So this intermunicipal, true Chair, this intermunicipal agreement is before council approval today because the prior agreement has expired. And we are renewing this agreement for the partnership between City of Somerville, City of Cambridge, and Metropolitan Area Planning Council is initiating this effort. So I'm happy to address any question for the members.
Questions? This item will be sent to Finance. Or are you looking for immediate approval tonight?
Madam Chair, as my understanding, the administration is looking for immediate consideration of this tonight.
Got it. Any questions on this item?
Is that correct?
Okay.
True Chair, yes.
Okay. Seeing none, this item is approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, members.
The next item then is going to be item 8.1, which is an officer's- Nope, that isn't right, is it? Let's see. The next item is going to be item 8.4, the Chief of Police conveying the Municipal Road Safety Grant application, taken up with item 5.1, which is a request of the mayor requesting approval to accept and expend a $60,000 grant with no new match required from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security to the Police Department for traffic safety enforcement.
Sergeant McCary is with us. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, Sergeant Michael McCary here, representing the Police Department, in requesting approval of a $60,000 competitive no-match grant provided by the Office of, Executive Office of Public Safety. This grant provides municipal departments with high level of flexibility in determining the best strategies to address local road safety issues. This includes traditional programs such as high-visibility enforcement and other road safety countermeasures, along with the traditional enforcement campaigns, you know, focusing on pedestrian and bicycle safety-focused enforcement and alternatives for specific speed-related safety equipment, and in the development of non-enforcement programs that focus on enhancing community awareness and officers' knowledge and skills and ability. The goal of the 2025 Municipal Road Safety Grant is to interact with motorists, bicyclists, and pedestrians in a positive manner and provide education to the public focused on protecting vulnerable road users. With the input of the community and stakeholders, the Police Department has evolved its strategy over the past few years to focus on the violations that pose the greatest risk to bicyclists and pedestrians, especially encounters at crosswalks that focus on protecting vulnerable road users, which will be carried forward into the FY25 grant activities. The traffic enforcement education focus focuses on red light compliance, speed, and mid-walk, crosswalks, and safety, and it aims to promote the safe and efficient orderly movement of motor vehicles and bicycles and pedestrians in the city of Somerville. This year, you know, we hope to focus on crosswalk safety using a decoy system, also infractions that promote bicycle safety, such as blocked bike lanes, unsafe passing, dooring, and jayhooking, and engage the community also in non-enforcement safety activities, giving out lighted safety bracelets and helmets. Thank you.
Colleagues, any questions on this item? Counselor Burnley.
Thank you through the Chair. I appreciate the additional information about this that is attached to the grants. As you know, we spoke about this in committee, and there were some lingering questions, particularly as it related to the, I want to get this right, pedestrian and bicycle safety enforcement, two-thirds of which is earmarked for, quote, "pedestrian crosswalk enforcement." I do appreciate reading in here that officers will be instructed to deprioritize and give their discretion considering true, the quotations are not mine, but true Idaho stops, and not to focus on bicyclists that come to a complete stop at red lights and then proceed to go I just want to maybe get a little bit of clarity of what you're comparing the true Idaho stop to as opposed to a false Idaho stop.
Thank you, Counselor. Through the Chair. So in prior instances of this grant where we've pulled people over, the first, where we've pulled bicycles over for going through red lights, the first thing, the first response the violator has is, "I did an Idaho stop." When in reality, they didn't do an Idaho stop, they went through the light, paid no mind or attention to pedestrians or cross traffic because they feel empowered because of the word Idaho stop. You know, we've, at the department, you know, we're very focused on the safety of people. And a lot of the times bicyclists will hide behind that Idaho stop, you know, saying that they did it, you know, that they're allowed to do it, or that we shouldn't be paying attention to it, when they're putting themselves at risk and they're putting the community at risk. So it is those individuals that are putting themselves at risk and the community at risk that we would focus on when we focus on bicycle enforcement. Any bicyclist that does come to a stop at a red light and uses courtesy, you know, to cross traffic and to pedestrians, as I mentioned in my memo to the council, you know, those type of actions will be deprioritized.
Counselor Burnley.
Just a quick follow-up on that, because I know there's data required with these grants. How will the department make a distinction in the reporting between someone who says they did an Idaho stop, but, you know, from, you know, different vanish points, could be seen as not Idaho stop, versus someone who's actually, you know, prioritizing everyone's safety but is including their own, which Idaho stops in the truest sense, studies find make cyclists safer because it allows them lead time ahead of cars and gives them their own space. I'm just curious about the distinction, how that'll be like made clear in the reporting and data.
Thank you, Counselor. Through the Chair. Absolutely. The instructions that I give to my officers when they are out doing bicycle enforcement, which is, like I said, is a very low percentage of this grant, but they have very specific instructions to, just as I have laid out in this memo to the council, that if they are stopping and they are being mindful, as I said, about cross traffic and pedestrians, that they are to give, you know, full consideration to that individual and focus on those individuals who do not give that same consideration to the, to other vulnerable road users and cross traffic. Thank you.
Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, thanks, Madam President. Counselor Burnley went to the, went where I was going to go in terms of asking. I appreciate the follow-up from Finance. I appreciate Sergeant coming into Finance and talking to us there, being here tonight. I appreciate the conversations you and I have had here over the past year about the different versions of this grant. Yeah, it's good to see it going in a direction where the community, I believe, will feel listened to about some of the things that did not please the community in the past about how this grant was administered, or the, how the grant funds were used and how the enforcement was carried out. So yeah, I appreciate the collaboration on this, and yeah, I feel good about this. I hear the community crying out for more enforcement, and I, you know, it's pretty clear to me, this is a big tool in our toolkit here for getting more enforcement, so I'm glad to see that. Thanks.
Any other questions? This item is approved, and 8.4 is placed on file. Next item.
And that is going to return us to the regular order of business, which is item 4.1, an order by Counselor Strezzo, that the Director of Somerstat and the Director of the Council on Aging appear before this council's Committee on Equity, Gender, Seniors, Families, and Vulnerable Populations to discuss the results of the recent senior survey.
Counselor Strezzo.
As described.
Let's send this to Equity. All right. Next item.
Item 4.4 is a communication by Counselor Strezzo and Pineda Neufeld conveying that the Tufts Shuttle, including the Saturday grocery store shuttle bus, is free for any Somerville resident to ride.
Counselor Strezzo.
Colleagues, I have a bunch of exciting news for you. Finally cracked this mystery, which wasn't really a mystery at all, turns out. Any Somerville resident can get on the Tufts Shuttle bus, which was, which has always been, but have finally received confirmation of such. So the Tufts Shuttle, it runs September through May, no summer schedule. It is free for any Somerville resident to just hop on, no ID required or anything required. On Saturday, folks, it goes to the Medford Stop &amp; Shop at that plaza along Fells Way. And that plaza, aside from Stop &amp; Shop, also has numerous other stores, such as Aldi, such as Carter's, such as a few banks, such as, oh, I don't know, Ocean State Job Lot. And there is a website where you can track where the shuttle is going called the Tufts Shuttle Tracker. There's also an app for that. So I do encourage everyone to take a peek and utilize this service if you so fit. Oh, also forgot, the shuttle buses go downtown. They run in a continuous loop from the Medford-Somerville Campus Center to Davis Square. And then there's also a shuttle between Medford-Somerville Campus and the Fenway Campus to the School of Museum of Fine Arts student, for students. They both run during the academic year. Please use it. Thank you, colleagues. Tell your constituents.
That item is placed on file. Next item.
Item 4.5 is a communication by Counselor Ewan Kippen conveying an update on the confirmation process for new hires in civil service positions.
Counselor Ewan Kippen.
Here is my communication. Colleagues, so I'm serving as Chair of Confirmation of Appointments this year, and I just wanted to share my intentions for how we address new hires in civil service positions. So this is new hires in fire and police, and I wanted to bring this up for discussion, questions. So as you all know, the Charter gives us the power of confirmation both for new hires and for promotions within civil service departments. Whenever there is a promotion, we have the opportunity to, in committee, in executive session, and we've done this primarily with the Police Department, we enter into executive session to review the candidate's records with the city, to see, for example, have there been complaints, has there been discipline? And we established a kind of protocol that our solicitor kind of helped us make sure that we were doing correctly. And I have no intention to change that process whatsoever. I think it is incredibly important, if we are being asked to approve a promotion, we need information to help us make that decision of yes or no, right? For new hires, legally, we are in a very different situation. Our city solicitor has informed us year after year, and I'm happy to go into the details for anyone who's unfamiliar, but essentially, we are prohibited from considering any information about a candidate's background for new hires that was reviewed by the mayor prior to the candidate's medical exam. So they come to us after their medical exam, and because of kind of a history of litigation in the city, we can't then go back and review things that happened before the, that we knew about before the medical exam. All of us on that committee have expressed how frustrating it is that we are brought in after the medical exam, and therefore, through an easy timing switch, we could be, have these meetings before the medical exam, and then we could just ask basic questions about background. That just has not been the case, right? So the way it has worked since I have been on the council, and I believe long before that, is that they're brought to us after the medical exam, and basically, we can't ask any real questions. And if we were to vote not to approve someone in those, in that situation, you know, the council would be legally in a tough, tough spot. So my thinking, as you can see later in this agenda, we have a lot of fire, new hires coming in, we have a number of police. My thinking is that when we have positions that were budgeted for, we do not send new hires to committee. I don't think it's a good use of the committee's time, I don't think it's a good use of the council's time or the candidate's time. I think it is incredibly important that we retain this power because there could easily come situations in the future. In the recent past, there have been attempts to hire people beyond how many budgeted positions we have. There were hiring practices that bothered a lot of the council, and it was important, I think, that we had this right. But in the normal course of events, as Chair, if I'm able to confirm that these are budgeted positions, that everything has just been a normal civil service hiring process, interviewed, recommended for approval, to me, it stands to reason that we don't need to spend hour after hour after hour after hour basically asking non-questions of these candidates who come before us. So that is my thinking for how to handle this going forward. Obviously, I can't unilaterally institute this, right? Like anytime, if a counselor wants to send one to committee, they can, you know, we can send people to committee. And my view is kind of in the normal course of events, it's a much better use of our time to do that, only when there is a particular reason that a counselor has to do that. So I bring this up to ask colleagues for feedback, thoughts. I did want to say, when I started on the council, I was on the confirmations appointment, and Counselor Scott was the Chair, and he kind of established a lot of the protocols we use. I've talked about this with him at length. He is totally supportive of this. He, you know, I think is quite frustrated that we're put in this situation, as am I, that we could just have these meetings before the medical exam. But given that we don't, that that is the decision that the previous mayor and the current mayor have continued to make, you know, it's just not a good use of anyone's time. So that's my thought, and that's, my thought is, because we, I'm bringing this up tonight, we have a lot of names on the agenda, my thought for these folks is, lay them on the table, we'll take them up at the next meeting. I don't want to rush people that are just hearing this for the first time, but I welcome questions, feedback. Thank you.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to the good counselor from Ward 3. An apology, if I missed this, when you said this, is this, is this your intent specifically just for firefighters, for all civil service positions, for positions beyond that, to the President?
Counselor.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you. Thank you for that. This is my intention for police and fire, civil service. As we established last term, for kind of decision-making bodies, adjudicatory bodies, the default is those guys go to committee, those people go to committee, excuse me. And then I wouldn't change the kind of protocol for other, you know, boards and commissions.
Counselor Davis.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President. So I sat on this committee when I was, when I first joined the council, and I distinctly remember sitting at that table, and at that time, we weren't provided anything prior to sitting down, and upon sitting down, we were handed a resume, maybe. That was pretty much it. And so as, you know, as the counselor who initiated the revisions to that process, who pushed for at least getting resumes and job descriptions prior to the meeting at the very minimum for these cases, you know, I note that in order to sort of provide the context and say, like, I think this is reasonable. I think this makes sense. I do, I do think there's probably a better way for the council in some way, shape, or form to be involved earlier in the process that could be, you know, could be addressed, could address legal concerns. We're not there. We, we, well, we're just, we're not there. And so, you know, given the rationale that the good Chair of the committee pointed out, I think for these, for those specific positions, this would save a lot of folks' time that we're not otherwise using in a real meaningful way right now, and so I'm in support of it. Actually, sorry, let me add one more thing. To the extent there's a risk or a concern here, it would be that, you know, a proposed appointee nominee, that there's some issue or concern. And so the only reason, the only way we would find out about something is if somebody, a member of the public raised something, there still are legal questions as to how that would play out in committee. That can still happen. These agendas are published ahead of time, not too long ahead of time. I think it's an open question whether we, you know, whether- whether leaving nominations on the, on the table for two weeks until the next city council meeting might be sort of a middle ground there. I'm not necessarily pushing for that, I'm just throwing it out there for consideration. But either way, I think that, I think that this is a solid way to use all of our time better.
Madam President, just can I, on that point?
Yes.
I also just wanted to mention, in my discussions with the Intergovernmental Affairs, I asked that when they're submitting names, and when I'm going, you know, making sure that these are budgeted positions, et cetera, that they provide the signature list. So in civil service hiring, if they want to hire for two positions, they collect two N plus one, or getting that wrong. And so that, and you'll see on tonight's agenda, there is the relevant signature lists for all of the positions before us. And that's just if a counselor is, has a concern of, you know, is there discrepancies that they'd like to look at? That those are public documents, those will be on the agenda. I would encourage also everyone, you know, for folks who have been following this particular issue for a long time, take a look at the names of the people who are coming up for fire tonight. I think there are names that folks will be happy to see after, you know, kind of the last couple of years. I'm hoping that, you know, this process continues to just go smoothly, and we don't need to spend a lot of time on this. If in the future, different administration, different council, things go off the rails, these powers all still exist, right? At any time, a majority of counselors can send folks to committee, can change all this. But my thought is, this is, this is going to be a lot more efficient. Thank you.
You have Counselor Mbah, and then Counselor Wilson.
Thank you, Madam President. To the good counselor, I appreciate your, your thinking about this. I think it all makes sense. I also sat on this committee for several years, and when I got, got back on the council, because it was almost like, before I got back on the council, it was, the committee was like a rubber stamp. And then when I got back, Chairman Scott really overhauled the process. And then when I got back on the committee, I could not even take, you know, like, the same process. I was like invoking Chairman Scott's process. I was like, let's go to executive session, and then almost felt it was the same old rubber stamp that we actually ran against that was back in place in operation. So, I think I appreciate that if it's something that is already budgeted for, yeah, we, you know, there's really not been any challenge, you know, to kind of like start the process. So, I appreciate, you know, like really streamlining that process. Thank you.
Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, thanks, Madam President. I want to thank the Chair of CAPM for, for coming to us with this. You know, having served on the body for a couple of years, I, you know, I was always struck, you know, I always tried to come up with what I thought were reasonable questions to ask people who came before us. You want to take an interest in what they're doing. It was tough with these positions, just knowing how our hands are effectively tied in terms of, you know, if we were to, what we can ask, you know, it struck me, I did wonder, is this a good use of our time? I'll say they always answered really well. It was an amazing coincidence. Very, whoever was preparing them did a phenomenal job. It probably worthwhile to just do what we're doing here and focus on, focus on what CAPM can actually impact positively. So, yeah, I support this.
Counselor Klingon, then Counselor Said.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you. Yeah, I think this is a good idea, although, you know, my overly cautious brain is like, you know, when people get confirmed, it's essentially, you know, us that's confirming them. I, I've been on confirmation for a lot of time, and, you know, many times, and, you know, I find myself frustrated, and, you know, oftentimes, yeah, it just definitely seems like some sort of, I don't know, act of something. But, but I guess my only question is, is, so speaking to what Counselor Wilson said, is there a possibility of like, like one standardized question that goes in the file, like that would then be attached to the council record, so we could just get a sense of like where somebody's headed that, or, I mean, even that probably, even if that seems like a lot. Then I also have a question of whether or not, if you, if somebody sees a name and they have a problem with it, if we enact this new process by flagging that one person, is that then they haven't had the same process, you know? That came to mind. But ultimately, I'm in favor of this. I just think maybe, you know, there's a way to satisfy that piece where if we just had, you know, one question that the council asks and gets, goes on the record or not. As you say, I definitely think this is the better way to go, all in all.
Counselor Ewan Campen on that point.
Madam President, through you, I'm more than happy to just discuss this, try to come up with a, something that could work.
Counselor Said.
Through you, Madam President. To Counselor Ewan Campen, firstly, I want to thank you for trying to address this and bringing it to the full council for discussion. Having served on that committee for a year, I share my colleagues' frustration. It does create, like, a lot of the times, these awkward situations where, you know, we're very limited in terms of the questions we can ask. So we really appreciate that we're having this discussion, and we're trying to figure out a better way to use that time. So, thank you.
Okay, this item is placed on file. Next item.
Item 4.6 is an order by Counselor Mbah that the Director of Constituent Services submit in writing the protocol for proper handling of downed wires.
This item's approved. And Counselor Wilson would like to sign on.
Item 4.7 is an order by Counselor Mbah that the Director of Inspection Services conduct proactive inspections in high-traffic areas, including school zones, senior housing areas, and commercial corridors during and after winter storms to ensure compliance with snow and ice removal regulations.
Counselor Wilson would like to sign on, and Counselor Mbah.
Thank you, Madam President. Which one, which item is that?
4.7.
Nice. So, following this recent snow, you know, fall, I observed several sidewalks around West Somerville Neighborhood School, you know, covered in ice and creating dangerous conditions for pedestrians. In one instance, I actually saw a family struggling, and some even falling, so while walking their kids to school. I don't think, you know, that is something that we should be seeing, you know, on our street. And our city policy requires property owners to clear snow and ice from sidewalks, but without proper enforcement, public safety is compromised. So we need stronger action, you know, from our Inspection Services Division to ensure compliance, issue timely penalties, and protect vulnerable residents, including children, you know, and seniors from unnecessary harm.
Counselor Klingon.
Oh, thank you, and thank you to the good Counselor Latch for bringing this forward. In Public Utility Public Works meeting just the other day, the Director of Inspection Services explained the way that they actually do prioritize these areas, specifically school areas, areas with elderly buildings and so on. It's, I mean, at some point, it's probably just a matter of staff, you know, number, simply sheer number of, I know that they max out at seven to 10 after a storm, which is like 10 times better than it used to be in terms of the workforce that goes out to ticket after a storm. But certainly, we can always do better, and, and, yeah, I mean, thanks for flagging this, bring it to people's attention.
Would you like to send this to committee or approve it tonight?
Approve it.
Okay, this item's approved. Next item.
Item 4.8 is a communication by Counselor Mbah conveying a report on the meeting of the Job Creation and Retention Trust.
Counselor Mbah.
Thank you, Madam President. Just one, did you skip 4.6?
We approved it.
Okay, thank you. So, thank you, Madam President, again. So the Board of the Job Creation and Retention Trust met on February 4th to discuss the overall situation of its expected lack of revenue in fiscal year '26 and the resulting inability to renew any of its current projects. So there are now 10 projects of workforce training, career training, job-related, you know, English as a second language, and they are being funded with either upper monies or developer linkage payments. So no more revenue from either source is expected in the coming fiscal year. So the trust is still holding some unspent money, which has been committed for four projects that have not yet gone out to bid. And the Board decided to look again at these commitments and consider whether there is greater need to continue one or two existing projects. In particular, the Board identified a program called Post-Secondary Success, which OSBCD and the high school run jointly. It has already assisted 67 graduates from the classes of 2022 in 2023. So, they receive support, training, and guidance during their first fiscal year of work and higher education. So another 30 students in this year's graduating class could be chosen if the trust can find, like, $100,000 to continue their work into 2026. So I'm actually planning to discuss with the Finance Department just to see how we can, you know, use some of the unspent, you know, money in stabilization account, so we can at least, you know, support this, finish this $100,000 grant to support the kids. I submit this report, you know, as it is.
All right, we'll place that item on file. Thank you, Counselor. Next item.
Item 4.9 is an order by Counselor Panada Newfeld that the Commissioner of Public Works work with relevant city staff to plan citywide community cleanup days in each ward.
Counselor Panada Newfeld.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I think the last citywide cleanup day was 2021. So I was going through my old photos, and I was wearing a mask during it. But it, it used to be a city organized event across the city. Every ward would go out on the same day, usually in April, and clean up a piece of their ward. Now, we have counselors currently who are doing that on their own. Counselor McGlaughlin, I know you do that in Ward One often. But I've heard from constituents the desire to bring this back, and curious why it went away. And I have tried to do some digging. I couldn't even really figure out what department it was at under, so I put it in DPW, hoping Commissioner Leithan can give us some answers here. And, and of course, wrote, you know, working with the relevant city staff to see what we can do to, to bring back the community cleanup days. So that's what this is about. Can we send this to Public Utilities Public Works for this discussion? Thank you.
Okay, I saw, Counselor Wilson, what's to sign on? Did you want to speak as well?
Yes, I want to speak.
Yes, you want to speak? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank our colleague from Ward Seven for putting this in. A number of us have been calling for this, and it's great to see the, the voices calling out for something that the community really wants. Love to see if there's a way to figure out how to make this happen here this spring. I'll point out, you know, also, it could be a great thing to include as a budget priority. Just reminding colleagues, I think the deadline is March 28th to get those in, so could make a very good budget priority.
Okay, Counselor Strezzo.
Thank you. Ms. Acting President to Counselor Wilson and also colleagues, I believe this day, I, let's pause on putting this as a budget request, because I believe this used to be sponsored by, these were Comcast Cares Day. Comcast used to sponsor these days every single year. And suddenly, weirdly, it just stopped. So can we, you know, get some corporate sponsorship again to, for them to front the money on this, and see what happens? So maybe Director Leithan can, can see what happened, where the grant money went for this, and can they choose to sponsor it again? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I saw, Counselor Klingon.
Yeah, Mr. President, through, I was going to mention that, yeah, I don't know if it was like after COVID, they kind of took advantage of the, you know, like a lot of things just kind of went away. And I don't know the exact source of funding from Comcast. Like, I don't think it was like the money, the franchise fees that we give, you know, that go to the communications. I think this was a separate pot of money. Actually, we just get some pretty cool swag, remember the hats at the Somerville, yeah? But, but, yeah, they had all the different stations and, you know, the different places around the city. And probably, I would think that it was either like HHS or Open Space, the Department, it wasn't, DPW just provided, I think that they picked up the trash. I don't think they provided the tools even. It was, it was, it was some other, so somebody with some institutional knowledge should know, and we should be, hopefully, we can get that back. I don't know if Comcast is open to it, or, you know. We have other, probably now, new corporations in the area that may be willing to, to kick in as well. But I appreciate the council bringing this forward, because, you know, we, the spot they used to clean near my area was the Boathouse, and then also some parts of the Mystics. And, yeah, it was really an important day for the community, and I'd love to see it come back. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I can confirm that DPW definitely provided some tools and other assistance at the back of the day. Counselor McGlaughlin.
I have the institutional knowledge. And I'll tell you that it's all of the above. Comcast grant, it was COVID, and it was also the Director of HHS left, and he was kind of the main person driving it. He left and it went away. Should be easy enough to do. And the fact that this is, I think, our second or third request for this, it's like, this is community cleanup. I don't think this should have to be a budget item. This should be an easy, like, let's do it in a month, let's do it on Earth Day, which is when it's supposed to happen. And I'll just tell you that I really need this, and I would actually, if possible, like to take it up in Public Health and Safety, because this is near and dear to my heart. I've been doing monthly community cleanups, and it is a burden. It is a labor of love, but it is a labor. And to have some city assistance and to have a regular community cleanup time, it goes a long way, especially in my neighborhood where there's trash really piles up on the streets.
Okay, so that'll be referred to Public Health, Public Safety. Is that okay? All right, very well.
Item 4.10 is an order by Counselor Panada Newfeld that the Director of Health and Human Services and the Chief of Police consider installing emergency call boxes in key city locations, including Davis Square.
Can we send this to Public Health, Public Safety, Mr. Chair?
Public Health, Public Safety.
Item 4.11 is an order by Counselor Panada Newfeld that the Director of Mobility prioritize North Street for speed humps and other traffic calming measures.
We send this to traffic and parking, Mr. Chair.
Send to traffic and parking.
Item 4.12 is an order by Counselor Panada Newfeld that the Director of Economic Development begin the process for developing a Teal Square commercial area plan.
Thank you. So, I sometimes say Teal Square is like the forgotten little brother of Davis Square. There's a lot of attention right now in Davis Square, and it's, and it's commercial area plan and potential development there. And we've seen Teal Square really change and shift in the, in the years I've been a counselor. Obviously, recently, lost Rudy's institution in the square. Lots of other restaurants have closed, some have opened. And I continue to think sometimes that Teal is the forgotten square. So, I'd like the Director of Economic Development to begin the process of engaging in developing a commercial area plan, so we can look holistically at the square and the needs for businesses, for residents, for the community, and thinking, again, holistically about planning for Teal Square's future. So that's what this order is about, and I'm hoping we can send this to Housing Community Development for discussion.
Okay, Counselor Wilson would like to sign on. And that'll be sent to Housing Community Development.
The next item then is item 4.13.
Counselor Panada Newfeld.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can we waive the readings of 4.13 to 4.18 and send them to school buildings maintenance, no, school buildings?
School buildings, facilities and maintenance?
Facilities and maintenance, ah!
Sounds like a plan.
Yes, thank you.
All right, very well.
Item 4.19 is an order by counselors Klingon, Ewan Campen, and Wilson that the Director of Capital Projects update this council on the potential plan to use the Holman site for installation of a stormwater retention tank.
Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Madam President, through you. So, this is an item that was sparked from a conversation with, actually, the director. He, so whether or not a tank goes at the Holman site, a retention tank, is sort of a big determining factor of what we can do there. And there was one point in time in the last two years that, in a meeting, the director actually said, well, we don't actually have to put it there. And that's not to say that, he may have just been spitballing, but the point is, is that some people grabbed on to that. And so there's really this question of, is the tank going to have to go there or not? And there is, so why I put this in is because there is some new information. I wanted to provide a platform for the director to come and update the community, because I think people really are confused about whether or not a tank is going there, what, and how is that going to affect what's happening. And this may not be a, you know, definite answer, but it's an update, and I think that people deserve to hear whatever that is. So, you know, my hope is that they can figure out some sort of alternative, or, and I guess there are pieces- there are pieces of it that have to do with what the MWRA does. So that's what I mean. But it's, nothing's really in stone either. So it's, there is potential good news and, but it's an ongoing sort of process and that's happening between us and other partners. And so as far as this latest sort of twist of events or something, I want to have that come to, I guess since it's about a tank, I can, Public Utility Public Works, and that's my committee.
So that's Public Utilities, Public Works. I'm councillor Wilson.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Madam President. This, the question about this tank is really standing in the way of figuring out the future of that site. And we can look out the window and see it down there. It's, it's land that's right there, literally right there at a T station. This just sitting there is a surface gravel parking lot. And would, you know, we just, we need to get some answers on this. We have to figure out what the plan is and then hopefully move forward to doing something for Gilman Square.
All right, that item will be sent to Public Utilities and Public Works. Next item.
Item 4.20 is an order by councillors Klingon, Ewan Campen, and Wilson that the Executive Director of the Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development update this council on the current status of the implementation of the Gilman Square neighborhood plan.
Councillor Klingon.
Thank you, Madam President. So, you know, I think a colleague put something in not too long ago regarding the future of Gilman Square. You know, I continue to beat this drum using essentially what is the neighborhood plans. You know, we have these neighborhood plans. I believe they were created with the intention of implementing them. And sometimes I'm not sure depending on, you know, where in the city you're talking about. This particular plan was finished in 2014, as we know. And, you know, it just remains a struggle to figure out a path forward. A lot of it has to do with the Holman site. But a lot of it just has to do with, you know, the will and the bandwidth of staff and all these other things. And I think the folks, you know, we really just want to keep a light shining on Gilman. So just wanted to put another order in that could, would go to committee that we could then, you know, continue to force that discussion publicly. Although I do know that the Gilman, the neighborhood council itself meets periodically with the economic team. Although I'm not really sure how fruitful those meetings are at this point. It's just kind of, you know, a lot of kind of just probably looking at each other, well, over Zoom. There's not a lot happening. So I'd like to, I'd like to really see something get kicked up over there. So want to send this one to Housing and Economic Development, please?
Let's send this to Housing and Community Development. Next item.
Item 4.21 is an order by councillor Klingon that the Director of Inspection Services provide the Ward 4 city councillor with the details of all tickets issued for failure to remove snow between January 1st and February 12th, 2025.
Councillor Klingon.
That's just on file, Madam President. Hope to get that information to me directly.
Okay, that item's approved. Next item.
Item 4.22 is a resolution by councillor Klingon that the administration create a detailed list of duties for commission and committee liaisons, including specific duties as they relate to the respective body.
Councillor Klingon.
Thank you, Madam President. So this one, so, you know, we recently, the administration rolled out what is to be sort of the roadmap for committee and commission appointments and the sort of, the rotation or, you know, just the way that those, those bodies will be handled. And one of the things I noticed missing from it, which is often, there's often not a point of contention, but there are often a lot of questions around based on the committee or commission, you know, what the role of the liaison is. Like in some, in some commissions or committees, the liaison does take minutes. And some they're, they don't, they do not take minutes and someone else's volunteer is asked to take minutes. There are some who, the role varies depending on the commission. I think 90, probably 95% of commissions is pretty standard. But even then, I think having it in black and white would really help people that, you know, volunteer citizens that are coming on these commissions that don't really know, you know, they're just getting up to speed on how these commissions work, learning Robert's rules in addition to, you know, trying to figure out the different roles. And I just think it would be a good practice and an important thing for commissioners to have so that they knew what to expect and how that the interaction was between the liaison, city staff, and their body and how that, that is supposed to work if that could be kind of sort of. So that's, that's kind of the impetus for this order. I'm hoping that the administration will take it and kind of, you know, do something good with it. And in terms of, like I said, it could be a little more detailed around exactly kind of the different, different roles and different scenarios that might play out with regards to commissioners, whether they can talk to staff, not talk to, you know, these, these things. So I guess that would go to appointments and confirmations, please? Thank you.
Great, this will be sent to confirmation appointments. Next item.
Item 4.23 is an order by councillor Wilson that the Director of Communications and Community Engagement update this council on efforts to educate the public about preventing conditions conducive to growth of the rodent population.
Councillor Wilson.
Madam President, I'll move to also waive the readings of items 424 and 425 and ask that these three items be sent to rodent issues where they will serve as standing items so that we can get periodic updates on these three critical pieces of the city's rodent strategy, education, enforcement, and mitigation. Thanks.
Next item then.
Item 4.26 is an order by councillor Wilson that the Director of Inspection Services and the Director of Planning, Preservation, and Zoning discuss with this council type 4 heavy timber construction now permitted in the 10th edition of the Massachusetts State Building Code 780 and potential impacts on inspections, development, and the zoning ordinance.
Councillor Wilson.
Madam President, as of October, we have a new type of construction now allowed under state building code and it's a potential game changer on construction finances and building heights. I'd love to talk to our ISD and PPZ directors about what it means for us, from inspections to our zoning. And so I'll ask that this be sent to land use for discussion. Thanks.
Councillor Baugh.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I would like to sign on. Just to add my little tool saying that this new set of regulations, you know, provides rules and standards to use mass timber that is structural, wood beams as part of the construction of larger buildings as a way to replace carbon heavy metal and concrete pads. And I realized that, or discovered that in the past, wood construction was only permitted for small scale residential buildings with maximum five or six story height. So now the wood industry is able to produce some structural materials that can support large scale construction and still meet free, still meet fire and safety performance standard. But one of the most important thing that I'm realizing is that we also need to check on, focus on how the changes will have impacts on climate change and energy savings. So, thank you.
Okay, that item will be sent to land use. Next item.
Item 4.29 is a resolution by councillor McGlaughlin that the Executive Director of the Welcome Project update the city council on the status of the Somerville Workers' Center.
Councillor McGlaughlin.
Hey, Madam President, I'm very curious about how the workers' center is going. City Clerk's office replaced Economic Development, I think, with the Welcome Project. I would like Economic Development there as well because I believe they supervise the grant and we can't tell the Welcome Project to come to this meeting. I will certainly invite them. But on the Job Retention Trust Fund that I previously sat on and really enjoyed and enjoyed seeing a lot of good things getting done, one of our biggest projects was a workers' center. I don't know what's going on with it. I want to know all the good things that are happening and what more can be done. And I'll take this up, well, I guess, whatever committee you prefer.
Good question.
I'll take Public Health and Safety if no one wants it. It's not that.
Or Equity? Yes, Equity? Let's send it to Equity then. Okay, great. Thank you, councillor. Let's take a quick break. I need a quick break. 9:25, we'll come back. Thank you, colleagues.
Welcome back, colleagues. We're going to call this meeting back to order. Madam Clerk, can you call the next three items together?
So can we read the announcements once?
Yes. Colleagues, we're going to take a few more out of order. We're going to take seven three, seven four, and seven five together now.
Thank you, Madam President. Item seven point three is a request of the mayor requesting ordainment of an amendment to Articles six, nine, and ten of the zoning ordinance to establish a new research and development zoning district.
We're going to send that to Land Use with a copy to the Planning Board. Next item.
Item seven point four is a request of the mayor requesting ordainment of an amendment to Articles two, three through six, and nine of the zoning ordinance to revise the regulations for arts and creative enterprise, office, and residential uses.
We're going to send that to Land Use with a copy to the Planning Board. Next item.
Item seven point five is a request of the mayor requesting ordainment of an amendment to Articles eight and twelve of the zoning ordinance to establish a new arts and innovation subarea of the master plan development overlay district.
And that will go to Land Use with a copy to the Planning Board. Next item.
And that will return us to the regular order of business and item six A, a report of the Committee on Confirmation of Appointments and Personnel Matters, meeting on February fifth, 2025.
Counselor Ian Kibbin.
Thank you, Madam President. The confirmations committee met to consider three appointments to the Human Rights Commission. There are currently eight vacancies out of 12 seats. So these three bring the commission to a quorum, and we were informed that a process to recruit the remaining five additional vacant seats is underway. The committee asked a series of questions to each of the three candidates and ultimately voted to recommend approval of Jenny Bonham Carter, Lauren Chapman, and Brian Sokal, with the first two votes being unanimous, the last vote being four votes in favor and one opposed. The meeting minutes are comprehensive. Video of the meeting is available for anyone wishing to view those interviews. We also discussed an update from the mayor's office stating that going forward, they intend to roll out a new reappointment process for boards and commissions, where instead of assuming reappointment for every board or commission member, they stated that for any seat that's been held by the same person for two terms, they will be opened for open recruitment effort with the current seat holder encouraged to reapply if they wish. The committee provided quite a bit of feedback on that plan, and I'd encourage anyone interested in this to view that discussion and review the minutes, and I ask that this committee report be accepted.
Okay, that committee report is accepted. Next item.
Item six B is a report of the Committee on Equity, Gender, Seniors, Families, and Vulnerable Populations, meeting on February third, 2025.
Counselor Strizzo.
Oh goodness, okay. So we met on Monday, February third, 6:00 p.m. We did it virtual this month, and we had Director Ashley Speliotis from the Council on Aging present. We had Director Karen Carroll from the Health and Human Services. We had Director Luisa Oliviera of Public Space and Herbivorous Forestry present. We talked about the item on free menstrual products and all city-owned bathrooms and the discussion of realistic sizes. Director Carroll noted that there is much research around period poverty and that it is a very real issue, that some people have issues getting to menstrual products or being able to afford menstrual products. This is also happening in Somerville. And Director Carroll wanted to detail of where the six dispensers that are free are placed, including the teen centers, Project Soup, and other areas where teens and adults might be found. They're restocked every 28 days, and the average use appears to be about 25 tampons and 25 pads dispensed per month. And they're still working on the data collection of it. They should have more information on it about March or April. And Director Carroll also reported that the city has three contracts to provide these products, one with HHS, one with libraries, and one with the school department. So stay tuned. We also discussed at length the Vietnam and Korean War memorials and the locations. Director Oliviera appeared for this item. She discussed the memorials and that they plan to be placed outside Somerville High School with reinstallations scheduled. The design is underway, with bidding set to February this month and construction starting in April, so it's about to happen in the next couple of months. And I personally asked if we could have some form of actual physical sign so that residents and all who want to visit the memorials will know that it's coming very soon because the public is very interested in this. We also talked about the veteran services. Let's see, we talked about the signage that... that they're still working on the City Hall concourse veteran memorial monuments. Liaison Hutter reported that there are no additional plans for reinstallations at this time and said that the other memorials will be placed on the high school concourse and at appropriate locations of the city, adding that the staff is diligently working on this matter. We talked about with the Council on Aging, how to support seniors with grocery store inflation and transportation. We talked with Director Speliotis about the transportation, the taxi grant program that the city absorbed after COVID when the state funding for this evaporated. A little more details on that and the concept of a senior liaison, still discussing that. And that's about it. If you want to read the rest of the minutes, go on and check in on that, but I submit these minutes for your approval and to be accepted. Thank you.
Okay, that committee report is approved. Next item.
Item six C is a report of the Committee on Finance, meeting as a committee of the whole on January 30th, 2025.
Counselor Wilson.
Madam President, as you just heard, the Finance Committee met as a committee of the whole on Thursday, January 30th, with nine counselors present. Over two hours and 58 minutes, we tackled a two-item agenda. First item was a public hearing on the community's FY26 budget priorities. We had 21 residents in total speak during the 39-minute public hearing, voicing support for funding, an alternative emergency response located outside the police department, camera traffic enforcement, more and improved teen spaces, affordable housing programs for our immigrant community and for residents facing displacement, general capital improvements, meal plan program, and programs supporting our vulnerable populations in general. Then we had a presentation on the non-union employee classification and compensation study, followed by an extensive discussion. Counselors asked questions about the individual contributor one and two positions and their exempt status as they pertain to jobs on the union side, as well as compensation for elected officials and members of multi-member bodies. A number of documents referenced during the meeting were requested by counselors ahead of taking the matter back up at tonight's meeting in the form of item eight point five. So I ask that this report be accepted as submitted.
That report is approved. Next item.
Item six D is a report of the Committee on Finance, meeting on February 11th, 2025.
Counselor Wilson.
Madam President, the Finance Committee met on Tuesday, February 13th, as well with three regular members present and Counselor Strizzo joining us as a fourth member of the committee for the evening, since she had two of her items on the agenda. We took up a 26-item agenda over the course of an hour and 45-minute meeting and unanimously recommended that you approve tonight the following: four time-only contract extensions, the acceptance of three grants totaling over 4.9 million, including a $2.5 million federal grant for the Poplar Street pump station requiring a 20% match that's already been satisfied, we heard, a $33,550 state grant for firefighter equipment paying for equipment for 10 firefighters, as we know their firefighter hires in the works here, a $2.4 million federal grant for Phase Two of the Clarendon Hills project. I asked Director Inosio about those two pretty sizable federal grants and possible implications of the chaos we are seeing federally playing out with grants, and we were told that we've already bonded out for the first one, so it's to repay a bond, but hopefully we're able to get this grant and offset that, and that in general, we're trying to get these processed quickly in hopes that these go through. So as well, we recommend approval of two prior invoice items totaling under $5,000, a transfer and seven appropriation items related to the Community Preservation Act funding for the projects that were selected, an appropriation for $20,900 to insulate the attic of 19 Walnut Street. If you see 16 Walnut Street, that's the playground next door. We're not insulating the attic of the playground, I assure you. And we were told we're currently using 19 Walnut Street, which was the old Parks and Rec facility there. We're using that as storage currently for Parks and Rec. Also then, finally, we recommended that you approve tonight an appropriation for $100,000 from the Water Enterprise Fund to satisfy a court judgment over the installation of a water meter back in 2018. So we then had a presentation of a mid-year FY25 expense report by our finance analysts that included some really interesting data. I'd encourage you all to go look at that item in Legistar. That includes a memo summarizing the report, as well as the report itself, if you haven't already done so. There was then a discussion of that report by the committee that's reflected in the excellent minutes. And we then took up four items by counselors. One was my item on the decision not to put ice down at Founder's Memorial Skating Rink this winter and to have that facility sit dark and unused for months. Counselor Latham from DPW explained what went into that decision and some of the factors in play should the city want to go in a different direction and put an ice sheet down there next winter. It was a helpful and informative discussion, and now we know what the blockers are to doing that. We then took up two related items with Counselor Strizzo pertaining to how counselors might go about getting support staff, with one item focused on permanent positions and the other on unpaid internships. We heard from the administration that working with the city clerk on the council's budget line would be the best approach in this case. Counselor Strizzo expressed a desire for a conversation directly with the Director of Finance, and I agreed to keep those two items in committee to facilitate that discussion. And finally, the administration responded to Counselor Klingon's item about the situation with the annual employee holiday breakfast for DPW, explaining that there was never any plan to cancel the event, but that if there was a perceived delay in publicizing the event, that resulted from guidance from the State Department of Revenue that required the city to find an appropriate funding source. So once that was accomplished, the event proceeded. Counselor Klingon inquired about future employee holiday breakfasts and events like that, and Legislative Liaison Hutter indicated that appropriate funding sources have been identified that could be used going forward for those. So with that, I'll ask that the committee report be accepted as submitted.
Okay, the committee report is approved. Madam Clerk.
And with that, there is one item before the council, and that is item 24-1712, requesting approval to appropriate $20,900 from the Energy Stabilization Fund to add attic insulation to the Recreation Department at some number Walnut Street. On that item, Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Counselor Burnley.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Strizzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Pineda Newfeld.
Yes.
With eight counselors in favor and three absent, that item is approved.
Next item.
I'm going to bring us to the next item, which is item six E, a report of the Committee on Legislative... turn my mic off. Item six E, a report of the Committee on Legislative Matters, meeting on January 28th, 2025.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee did meet on that date. All members were present. We discussed a few items. The minutes are thorough. I'll note, too, we got an update on some proposed improvements to the Wage Theft Ordinance. Policy Analyst Salisbury gave us the summary of those, and I want to thank everyone who's been working hard on making those improvements. We had a good discussion about those. A few questions came up, so those remain in committee. If folks want to take a look at that document where we are, please do so and raise any questions or share some thoughts. We heard a bit more from Policy Analyst Salisbury about the manual on legislative drafting. And then finally, we had an initial discussion on the request to establish a language access ordinance. The administration is working on that, and we look forward to seeing a draft when it's ready. And with that, I request that the report be accepted as submitted.
Okay, that committee report is approved. Next item.
Item six F is a report of the Committee on Public Utilities and Public Works, meeting on February 10th, 2025.
Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you, all committee members were present. We discussed a number of items. The first one being the Counsel Ewan Campen brought forward regarding the possible faulty readings on water meters related to the separate basketball-sized water tank. So there wasn't much of an update, so I guess the staff's been talking to Counselor Ewan Campen. Basically, they're investigating. All parties interested, including the vendor, as well as city staff, water department, are investigating, and so we left this one in committee just to see what comes out of this investigation. They need to figure out if they're... confirm if there is in fact an issue and then address it, but they're taking the issue very seriously and investigating fully. The next couple of things had to do with 165 Broadway. There's Counselor McGlaughlin had a few orders in regarding the space that teen empowerment uses. There is some office space that is currently occupied by some files and different stuff from the deputy director of HHS, who formerly held an office there. I guess they're working to get that stuff cleaned out. They have to dispose of it properly, as government documents are, which is to make sure that they're archived properly and so on. And then, of course, there's the big question about making the building ADA compliant. Liaison Hutter said that as far as the city's concerned, from their standpoint, they did have a plan that was, I guess, introduced a couple of years back. I think it's about $15 million to... she didn't have the details of the plan, actually. We're waiting for that document, that plan that was discussed and developed. Counselor McGlaughlin would like a copy, as would other committee members, because I'm assuming that the $15 million means like, you know, an elevator plus, in terms of fixing the place up. Our question is whether or not we could get an elevator installed for a lot less than that, but the city, again, did have this plan, and so we're kind of working through whether or not there is another option. But first, I just want to look at exactly what, historically, what they came up with for that building in previous discussions. So that was left in committee, and then we... as I said earlier, Director Antinavica addressed the fining for non-snow removal. He said that a standard enforcement pattern is used, typically a threshold of two inches or more. Like I said, he has about seven to 10 staff members that fan out across the city, prioritizing school areas as well as elderly housing, senior housing, and other vulnerable properties... sorry, other vulnerable community member properties. They do... so I guess they issued 100 tickets, were issued just the other day when I asked, but basically, they're given tickets, they're not given warnings, although they do try to work with people. Certainly, for our senior population, there is an appeal process, so if somebody does get one because they couldn't find somebody to help, the city will work with them. But ultimately, as far as able-bodied, multi-owning property owners, we have zero tolerance at this point. There is just too many sidewalks that are being left unshovelled and uncleared, and whether that's something that needs to be worked out between the property owner and the tenant or whatever the case may be, it's not our issue. Our issue is making sure that the sidewalks are safe, and so the director assured us that ISC is taking it very seriously and doing as much as they can with the amount of staff that they have. And yeah, I mean, that's basically it. I ask that this report be accepted as submitted. Thank you.
Okay, that committee report is approved. Next item.
Item six G is a report of the Special Committee on School Building Facilities and Maintenance, meeting jointly with the school committee's School Building Facilities and Maintenance Committee on February 6th, 2025.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. All members were present on this evening. We had... we discussed a number of items, including generally the MSBA process, as it stands, for replacement of the Winter Hill and potentially Brown School. We talked about that generally. We talked about the timing. There are some... the report... the minutes have a good summary of that discussion. We also talked about the item related to the survey that was put out by the administration that I talked at length about at our last meeting of the city council. The item... we had two members of the CAG, Counsel Strizzo and Ryan... yeah, the president of PTA, Ryan, whose last name I'm blanking on.
Williams.
Thank you. Sorry. It's getting late. And Ryan Williams, who's the president of the citywide PTA, both serving the CAG, spoke on that item. We reiterated the concerns with the way it was structured and the questions and reiterated the request that it be pulled down. The administration sort of walked through the thinking on some of the... The administration sort of walked through the thinking on some of the crafting of it, said it hasn't been pulled down, but the sort of the advertising of it, the publicity, had been essentially stopped, so they weren't receiving a number of additional responses. It was frankly, I left unclear whether, if a revised survey is put up, whether the data from the existing data will be included or not. The members of the committee expressed concern with that data being mixed with data for a potentially revised survey, and so I guess it remains to be seen. We also discussed, and there's a whole description in the minutes, if you folks want to dig into the details there or watch the video. It was exciting. We also heard some good news on the Argenziana School in terms of creation of a production kitchen and a new classroom on the third-floor atrium. So, thank you to Director Raish from IAD2 for his input on that, and for the folks who are working hard on that. And we also had a discussion about the temporary boiler at the Brown School and learned that the plan is actually to replace both of the boilers in that school so that we don't run into any concerns. Commissioner Lathan was there to talk about that. You can review the minutes on that as well for more detail, but that was also more good news. So, just worth noting the good work that folks are doing to improve our school buildings and keep them heated. So, with that, I request that the report be accepted as submitted.
Okay, that report is approved. Next item.
Item 6H is a report of the Committee on Traffic and Parking, meeting on January 27, 2025.
Counsel Said?
Thank you, Madam President. The Traffic and Parking Committee met with all three members present. All items were marked as complete, at the exception of one item that we kept in committee. Regarding reverting to the design of the bike lane entrance at Washington Street and Webster Ave to the original 100% plans, I sponsored Counselor Scott and two constituents. The amendment made to the bike entrance on the westbound side is making it difficult to navigate. The constituents highlighted the dangers of the current entrance, stating that cyclists must merge with cars and stop in a traffic lane to make the turn, which deviates from the original proposal. Director Paul Sowey committed to reassessing the area if a safety issue is clearly determined. He outlined two approaches for making changes, redesigning for contractor reconstruction if the contract is still open, or incorporating adjustments into a new contract if it's We discussed the on-demand dedicated pedestrian phase for the traffic signals at the intersection of Broadway and School Street. Director Rossin said that he will prioritize this and provide updates. We had a discussion regarding streamlining the process for parking permits for in-home elder care and health providers, including Meals on Wheels. We kept this item in committee until there is more information provided to Director Rymfret. Next, we discussed the feasibility of pedestrianizing Elm Street for select hours. Director Rossin said that the last few blocks of Highland Ave might need to be converted to two-way traffic, with signalized intersection being part of the equation. Over the next couple of months, mobility staff will prepare a feasibility plan. Regarding the request to install drive-slow children play signs on Health Street, Director Rossin reported that eight speed humps are planned for this season between Morland Street and Tople Street, and explained that staff does not recommend signage for use as a traffic calming measure. Last, we had a discussion about the consistent running of red lights during the weekday rush hour and repeated driver misuse of the Broadway bus lanes. Director Rossin indicated that staff will review this location and conduct a video study to determine frequency. He mentioned that the police department has been active at this site and noted that Massachusetts might have the opportunity to use traffic cameras, which could be beneficial in such situations. With that, I ask that this committee report be approved as submitted.
Okay, that committee report is approved. Next item.
The next item is Item 7.7.
Did we take something?
Madam President, I'll move to weigh the readings of agenda items 7.7 and 7.9 to 7.16 and ask those to be sent to Finance.
Those will be sent to Finance. Next item.
And with apologies, Madam President, I did skip over Item 7.1, a request to the Mayor requesting approval of a home rule petition to prevent landlords from passing Realtors' fees on to tenants.
All right, that item will be sent to Legislative Matters. Next item.
That will bring us to Item 7.17.
Madam President?
Counselor Ewan Campen?
I would like to lay on the table, I'll waive the reading and lay on the table 7.17, 7.18, 7.22 to 29, and 10.11. I'd like to lay those on the table until the next meeting, and I'd also like to waive the readings and refer to confirmation of appointments, 7.19 to 7.21. And I'd also like to move for approval of Item 7.30, please, if you'll read that item.
Let's read that item.
Yes, indeed. Item 7.30 is a request to the Mayor requesting confirmation of the appointment of Nikki Aurora to the Commission for Persons with Disabilities.
Okay, that item is approved. Next item.
The next item is Item 8.1, an officer's communication from the city solicitor conveying a response to Item 25-0105, Laura Ortiz's Open Meeting Law Complaint of January 11, 2025.
That item is placed on file. Next item.
Item 8.2 is an officer's communication from the Executive Director of the Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development, conveying the traffic mitigation commitment for 501 Mystic Valley Parkway.
That item is placed on file. Next item.
Item 8.3 is an officer's communication from the Somerville Redevelopment Authority, conveying the 2024 Annual Report.
That item is placed on file.
Item 8.5 is an officer's communication from the Director of Human Resources, conveying the Non-Union Compensation Study.
That item is placed on file. Next item.
Item 8.6 is an officer's communication from the Director of Economic Development and Director of the Arts Council, conveying the Draft Armory Master Plan.
That item is placed on file. Next item.
Item 9.1.
Counsel Burnley?
Before we do that, I actually did have a question through you to the Chair of Finance, if he could.
Counsel Wilson?
Through you to the Chair of Finance, I was curious, was there any interest in taking up, having a discussion about 8.5, the Non-Union Compensation Study, again in committee?
Counsel, actually, Madam Clerk hasn't answered that, or Counsel Wilson. Do you want to take that up?
I wasn't told about -- Madam President, I was given no information. I may wish us to do anything with that tonight, so I'm finding out, as you all are.
Madam Clerk?
Madam President, thank you. Through you, this is actually, has already been taken up. This was the materials that were presented in the committee that were not previously submitted for the record, so now we are getting them on the record so that they will be searchable and findable in the future. So, all of the items that are, all of the attachments to this item were exactly the things that were already presented in committee.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, 9.1?
Yes, and I'd like to waive the readings of 9.1, 9.2, 9.4 through 9.9, 10.12, and 10.14, and ask that they be approved.
Okay, those items are approved. Next item.
The next item that is going to be, Item 9.3, a new garage license for Assembly Square Auto Sales at 37 Mystic Avenue.
Send that to License and Permits.
Yes, please.
Next item.
That will bring us to Item 9.10, a public communication from 15 registered voters, requesting a zoning text amendment to amend various sections of the zoning ordinance.
That will be sent to Land Use, so a copy to the Planning Board. And Madam Clerk, let's waive 9.11 to 9.17 and place on file.
Item 10.1 is an order by Counselor Strezzo that the Director of Health and Human Services discuss with this City Council which school buildings have free menstrual product dispensers, how many dispensers are in each building, and how frequently they are restocked.
Do you want to take this as 10.2?
Yep.
Let's read 10.2.
Item 10.2 is an order by Counselor Strezzo that the Director of Health and Human Services discuss with this City Council the barriers to placing menstrual product dispensers in each school building, and the projected date for each school building to have them installed.
Counselor Strezzo?
Don't keep talking about it until I don't have to. Please send this to Equity.
Okay, let's send this, they will both to Equity, please.
Oh, did you want to send it to somewhere else?
No, that's fine.
I'd really like to not keep talking about it, but it just keeps not getting fixed, so until it's fixed, I'm just going to have to keep talking about it.
All right, those will be sent to Equity. Next item.
Item 10.3 is an order by Counselor Burnley that the Director of Racial and Social Justice provide an update on the Citywide Disparity Study, including when the report will be made available to the public.
Counsel Burnley?
Thank you. Just following up on an item that I know was of interest to several councillors, and we've had a number of discussions about previously. I went back in the record to try to see you, based on our last discussion, when this report was finally going to be done. And the last that came up, it said summer of 2024, and I would love to know where we are in that process. I will make a note that our staff have many things to do. I know that this particular member of staff has been a part of some of the task force recently around displacement and had a lot on his plate. Having said that, this has been a priority for the council for years, and I would love for us to actually be able to make some market progress on it. Thank you. So, I would love for this go to Finance.
Okay, this item will be sent to Finance. Next item.
Item 10.4 is an order by Counselor Burnley that the city auditor provide in writing to this council the revenue generated by the short-term rental tax and an estimate of how much additional revenue would be generated if a 3% community impact fee was adopted.
Counsel Burnley?
Thank you. This is something that was recommended in the Creative Displacement Task Force. It's something that I, as someone who was on the committee, have looked into quite a bit to try to go through the legislative record regarding Somerville's short-term rental I would note for the public that a 3% community impact fee, it would be possible for the city to adopt if we alter the ordinance. Currently, the ordinance, as written, makes this a moot point. That is why I'm asking for us to get some numbers behind this, so we can have a sense of what we are generating based off the existing ordinance, what we could potentially be benefiting off a change of it, and try to weigh the pros and cons, knowing that there was a reason that we prohibited specifically, in this case, someone from having a short-term rental outside of their primary residence. But that is a conversation, I think, would be great, actually, for Finance.
Okay, this item will be sent to Finance. Next item.
Item 10.5 is an order by Counselor Burnley that the Chief of Police present to this council the financial implications of the Public Safety for All recommendations, specifically the cost to fund additional officers, acquire and utilize body cameras, and implement a co-response model.
Counsel Burnley?
As said, to Finance, please.
Will be sent to Finance. Next item.
Item 10.6 is an order by Counselor Burnley that the city solicitor provide an assessment of whether a trust could be created for funds from short-term rental program, half of which would be allocated for grants to local artists for beautification projects, as proposed by the Creative Displacement Task Force.
Counsel Burnley?
So, again, going back to the Creative Displacement Task Force, one of the lingering questions that some of the committee members had, or task force members, I should say, had was if we were able to generate more revenue from altering our short-term rental ordinance, was there a way that we could essentially earmark those funds to support the arts, to support artist-based and artist grants? I'm not a lawyer, and I'm not a finance guy either, frankly. So, wanted to get a lawyer's opinion on that, just to see if there's a way that we can do that with the state caveat that at least 35% of those funds by law have to go to housing-related activities. So, I would love for that to go to Finance as well.
Okay, and so that's to Finance. Next item.
Item 10.7 is an order by Counselor Burnley that the city solicitor discuss with this council whether elements of Boston's proposed ordinance for road safety and accountability for delivery providers could be used to disincentivize mopeds on the community path.
Counsel Burnley?
Thank you, through the Chair. This one is me kind of, frankly, it's a bit swinging for the fences here. Those of you who pay attention to our sibling in Boston, Big Bro Boston, the Mayor recently brought forward an ordinance that was meant to essentially disincentivize gig riders and delivery folks who use mopeds specifically, from crowding spaces that they're not supposed to be on, taking up bike lanes, just potentially causing hazards by requiring those companies that use them to have liability insurance and register with the city. There are a lot of logistical aspects of this behind the scenes that I am quite aware that Boston has a very different structure and layout than we do, and I am curious if there are things that we can pull from this that would be helpful for us in specifically reducing the number of mopeds that have been on the community path, which many residents have noted is potentially a hazard to them as they walk with friends and family and children. For someone who understandably is in a rush because it's their job and they are probably not making nearly as much money as they need to to survive in this climate, but are, at the end of the day, doing something that is dangerous for our residents, so I'd love for that to actually, let's see, go to Legislative Matters.
Okay, this item will be sent to Legislative Matters. Next item.
Item 10.8 is a resolution by Counselor Burnley that this council consider including a plain language section within the Language Access Ordinance.
Counsel Burnley?
Thank you. I know that this is also a matter that has come up before the council, and there's been much discussion and interest about it, even on tonight's agenda. And, you know, I was looking back at the record, I was a little surprised at the time. I was like, oh, mark complete, we got a Language Access Ordinance? That's great. Not quite yet, but moving in that direction. And I said at the time that that item was introduced, and I'll say again, I think it's really important that as a part of that, we really work to implement plain language. Cambridge has a guide on this that I've attached to this item, and part of that guide notes at the top that plain language is incredibly important for translation services, for making things accessible in other languages other than English. And it's just, I think this is the best I can do in terms of learning from best practice here, making sure that we're not leaving a stone unturned as we try to be more inclusive. So, with that, I'd actually mark this one, we're complete, because I just want to make sure that Somerville folks have this on their radar, and they're incorporating this into what ultimately becomes, hopefully, a wonderful ordinance.
Okay, great, that item is approved. Next item.
Madam President, Counselor Mbah would like to be recognized to speak on an item that was disposed of earlier in the meeting.
Oh, okay. On which item, Counselor Mbah?
Thank you, Madam President. It was Item?
4.6.
The 4.6.
Okay, do we need to read that again? Okay, go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Madam President. I think this item is dear to my heart because there was an incident that happened. So, I witnessed a hazardous situation where there was a down wire that was hanging from a street pole to a neighboring property, and I immediately called 311 expecting a swift and responsible resolution. However, whoever responded made the situation worse by bringing the wire down and tying it to my fence, leaving it dangling across a busy street. So, this created a major public safety hazard, and it was only after a near accident that the fire department intervened to properly resolve the issue. So, this incident actually highlights the urgent needs for clear protocol, accountability, and better coordination between city departments, utility companies when handling down wires. Luckily, that was, it was a cable wire, so, you know, which actually, for me, I felt like, but when you look at the wire that is across the street, you don't know which one it is, but it's, I really thought I should actually put this on record, that this is what actually happened. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Counsel Klingon?
Madam President, happy to take that in, Public Utilities Public Works.
Madam President, happy to take that in Public Utilities Public Works, taking another bite at the apple. I put something similar in. I'm trying to get to the point where the, you know, the resident isn't told by 311 or whoever from the city to call the utility company, to try to connect those two entities in a way that, you know, we can avoid, you know, putting onus on the resident. So I, you know, I discussed it with the commissioner and, but you know how these things go, you know, perhaps more pressure, you know, with more counselors. I'm happy to take another bite at the apple. So if you want to put it in Public Utilities Public Works, that's.
Let's send this to Public Utilities Public Works. Thank you. Next item.
The next item that is going to be item 10.13, a new used car dealer class 2 license for Assembly Square Auto Sales at 37 Mystic Avenue.
Let's send this to licenses and permits.
Item 10.15 is a public communication from the trustees of Frala Realty Trust requesting a zoning map amendment to change the zoning district of 295 to 297 Medford Street and 93 Walnut Street from MR3 to MR4.
We'll send this to Land Use with a copy of the planning board.
Item 10.16 is a public communication from Greta Pintacuta submitting comments regarding bird feeding.
That will be placed on file.
And that brings us to the end of the agenda, Madam President.
Are there any late items, Madam Clerk?
There are no further items before this council.
Okay, Counsel Said would like to adjourn. We're adjourned.